Good evening and welcome to the October 20th meeting of the Belchertown Select Board. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the color which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own."
I'm going to open at this time, public comment, and remind folks that we have a three-minute limit, and we have one person, is it Bruce Officer? Okay, Bruce Officer, welcome.
Yeah, I just wanted to address the deals that I've been seeing in these articles. And people send in ideas for dattle building over there in the state school property. But I've seen nothing out here that has explained it to anyone where they're going to couple this million dollars and start renovating this building, or what they would do before they probably discourage everybody's ideas and carrying on, that we have no money to renovate the building. So I don't know where you're, I think you're going backwards. There's been no plan that's gone in there, there's been no, that I've seen anybody gone in and had any estimates on the building, but I know you're not going in there for a hundred million. So I think there needs to be a backdrop on this whole idea. It's just a shot in the dark that's going nowhere at this point. There's a lot of ways for anybody starting to move in or do anything. So I think we need a reversal. My opinion, go from here. If I have been involved in that building for 10 years, I think we're going to talk about it. It needs a lot.
Tadlo. Tadlo. Okay. Okay, we'll take that under advisement. Is there anything else? The floor is yours.
What I was, I think it's what I was onto on that. The other stuff that's going on here is hitting and missing, we'll deal with that if we come to it, I guess.
Okay. This is the only time for public comment, just so you know. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I see your other articles, do I see what your comments are, which may be the next thing.
All right, perfect, thank you very much. Hearing that, is there anybody listening that would like to provide public comment? Hearing none, I will close public comment at this time, thank you. Okay. Are there any? Are there any?
Oh, that's you.
Fred.
Are there any documents to sign?
We have minutes.
Okay.
For September 15th, all were present except Whitney.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written. For September 15th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Further discussion? Aye.
And then I abstain.
Yeah.
And then we have minutes for October 6th, all were present.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes for October 6th, 2025, as written.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
That's it.
Okay. There are no additions to the agenda, and so with that, we'll go into appointments. And is the Kestrel Trust here?
And here.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
Welcome. Do you want to come over? Yeah.
Would you like me to sit here?
Sure.
Hi, thank you for having me. So we're here to seek the Select Board's approval to certify that the conservation restriction from the trustees of reservations.
Could you start with who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, I'm Kristin DeBoer, I'm the Executive Director of Kestrel Land Trust.
Thank you.
And we've done projects with the town for the last 30 years. We hold many conservation restrictions over town land, and in this case, we're seeking approval for a conservation restriction from the trustees of reservations, which is another private land trust, to Kestrel to protect over 1,000 acres in the Belchertown, North Belchertown area. That land was previously owned by W.D. Coles and was sold to Lime and now being transferred to the trustees. So the conservation restriction would ensure that the forest remain a forest forever and that there's always public access, and we'll be working in partnership with the trustees to do community programs and invite the public to the land. And so we think it meets the public benefit for the open space plan that the town has, as well as the Commonwealth goals. We presented it to you at the last meeting in October, and so hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at it now, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Opening up to the board.
I have a couple of questions. Timber harvest, can you explain how that process works a little bit? So we can still harvest the timber off the land, or is that possible or not possible?
So in this situation, it's just going to be a wild forest, the forest will remain forest, and there won't be any commercial timber harvesting. There'll be some management if needed, but not commercial harvest.
What about hunting? How does hunting work for our hunting residents?
Yeah, hunting and fishing will be permitted.
So like people will be walking these trails on vision, but there's hunters out there, how do we balance that so no one gets hurt? And not take away from the hunting population and the deer population, but I don't want people to get shot, I guess, if that makes sense, safely.
Of course, yeah.
So how do we?
Well, right now, there's both.
Safito for everybody.
Yeah, so right now, there's both hunting and hiking, and they're best practices in Massachusetts, so that both can coexist. You know, during the hunting season, hikers do need to be more careful, wearing orange et cetera, but you know, hunters generally stay away from the populated trails.
They won't need permission, though, like from Kettle Trust to go out there and hunt the land, they can just show up and hunt the land like normal, or they have to get permission through you, Kestrel Trust?
So the trustees will be setting reasonable rules and regulations around public access for hunting and fishing, and so there might be some permission needed, but for the most part, it would be status quo.
My next question comes from ATVs. You guys don't allow ATVs on the trails, but you're allowing snowmobiles. We have an ATV population in town, I grew up in this town, riding ATVs, and the more we give to Kettle Trust, the less ATV land there is. The ATVs bring in revenue to the state, revenue for local businesses, but we're stopping it altogether, we're just putting a big X through it, but hunters use it, people use it to maintain the trails, how does that, how can we work together to get that for everybody in our town? So they're still using the trails now, but we give this to Kestrel Trust or Kestrel Trust manager, they can't use it all moving forward.
So snowmobiling has a lesser impact on the land because it's done when the land, when there's frozen snow, and there is an existing snowmobile trail on this land, which we thought was important to maintain. ATV use has a lot higher impact, and so we didn't think it met the conservation purposes of the forest conservation in this case. I think, you know, we'd be happy to work with the town to find areas that are more suitable for ATV use, and you know, certainly open to that moving forward.
Yeah, I'm just worried that if we exit out right away, that'll never happen in the future, and then less and less land is available for the ATV riders. I mean, this helps some kids, too, it helps with kids staying out of trouble, I mean, they take care of the land, they do everything responsible on their ATVs, they register, they have to take safety courses now. And I'm saying, there is some bad apples, but there's bad apples with hikers, too, throwing trash in the ground, but they help maintain these trails for the hikers also.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to advocate for them and making sure that we think about them for the future, because that's 1,000 acres. There's logging trails they maintain down there, and they rode the logging trails, and the reason we still have some of those trails is because of the ATV people.
Yeah, I appreciate your concern. Elizabeth Roblica from the trustees might be on the call by Zoom. I don't see her. Okay, so my helper is not here. I think the alternative for this land could have been big development and big solar, and so we're doing our best to keep it as forest. I want to hear your concern and also say, even though it is 1,000 acres, which is fairly large, there's still so much more land all around town, and so I'm happy to look at other options for ATVs, but I think that the project meets the tests of the public benefit because it will be open to everyone, and hunting, fishing will continue to be allowed, as well as snowmobiling on a designated trail, so.
And as I understand it, biking is also, it can be, I'm not saying it's.
Some mountain biking will be one of the recreational allowances after the trail assessments are done and so forth, so.
Sure, sure, so there is biking, there's fishing, there's hunting.
My next question, e-bikes, is that allowed? Because it doesn't really specify e-bikes, what category does that fall?
E-bikes, actually, it does, they make a reference to that.
Specific e-bike situation.
Yeah, they fell under there.
There's two different e-bikes that they recommend. Jeez, I had it, I have it underlined.
Class one and class two electric bikes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there it is. As defined in section 15 and 16 of chapter 176 of the 2022 Session Laws of the General Court of Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So you'd want to read more about that, but it also stipulates that horseback riding and other non-pedestrian-based passive outdoor recreational or educational activities are also going to be.
Yeah, so it's really almost everything. I think the ATV use tends to be just higher impact, and it wasn't consistent with how the project came together, but really, we're trying to have a large umbrella here and invite as many people to benefit as possible. And I think the other public benefits are, you know, water quality, wildlife habitat, you know, carbon sequestration, so there's other reasons to support this as well.
But I do understand your current concern. Does anybody else have anything? Whitney? Okay. So you'd like us to vote on this tonight?
That would be ideal.
Okay.
And I'll just note that the town of Pellon has also already signed.
Okay, great.
The counter CR in that town.
And the state's already signed off on it, too.
The state has signed off as well.
Okay, which is great. Okay, well, do I hear a motion?
My move that we endorse the request of the Kestrel Land Trust for the conservation restriction of 1,050 acres of forestry throughout North Belchertown, currently held by Lime Quabin LLC.
Second, okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And John, I'm happy to talk to you about other opportunities.
I just figured I'd bring it up, it's the perfect time for residents wanting to ask questions, so.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
All right, there's more to do and more places.
But it sounds like she's willing to work with you on all their areas.
Yeah, that's perfect, so I'll send it your way, and that's nice.
Yeah, it sort of requires different funding sources from the Gecko, but I think it's something we could work on.
Appreciate it very much.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much, and I do have the documents tonight, if I can leave that for you, if you're willing to sign it.
Can we do that?
We already have it.
One has to be.
We have it.
One has to be notarized, the rest of us?
Yeah.
Does anyone want to be?
You can just keep it.
Okay.
Well, Dan is here, he's a notary, so he can notarize for us at the end.
Okay, so why don't I come back tomorrow and pick it up?
Do you need it tonight?
No, I can, but I'll pick it up this week, because there's a chance we might.
Could we do it tonight? Yeah, let's just do it right now, so you don't have to come back.
Okay.
If Dan is amenable to.
Very good.
He's ready.
He's ready, thank you, Dan. You want to be the, okay. Whitney, you want to be the notary?
Will have you notarize Whitney?
Somebody has to.
Yeah, we'll have you not.
Somebody has to use the blue pen at the end.
Whitney can notarize it.
Somebody has to use the blue pen.
Now you know how old I am.
I need to sign it.
Don't forget it, it's going to be recorded.
Whitney, you have to use the blue, your last one.
Dan has a pen.
I feel low in the chair, but that's okay, no worries. And thank you for the work that you do, I'll be at your event on Thursday. And I was at Kestrel Trust on Saturday, walking Sweet Alice.
Oh, yeah.
Beautiful.
I did just get a text that, or my colleague at the trustees is trying to get in, I bet she can get in, so, she managed to be here by soon.
Well, tell her we're sorry, we missed her. Our town, our town manager will also be on, at the event on Thursday. Yeah.
You don't need a photocopy of that, Steve?
Yeah, well, we're recording it, which is a copy, but I'm happy to.
Just so you have it, and you don't have to come back.
That's great.
Thank you, but do send that back.
I'm glad I came this first time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. With us tonight, we have Gail Grammerosa, Chair of the Opioid Settlement Fund Advisory Committee. So what can we do for you?
Well, thanks, everybody, for having me. I know I sent a lot of information in advance, hopefully you had a chance to do it. I'm happy to continue to be the Chair of this committee. I guess what I want to do tonight is just give you some few updates, so it might feel like a quick bullet list of various things, and then we have an application that I'm hoping we can talk in more detail about, that has some timeliness to it. So just in terms of quick updates, just to make note of the fact that as of January, this committee will have been around for two years, so.
Congratulations.
Two years already, and in January was that first meeting. We continue to meet monthly, we're actually talking later this month about maybe stepping up our meeting schedule, just because we have some projects that we feel like we want to maybe move along. So if the committee is amenable to that, we might be meeting more frequently. Right now, we're working on the annual report, that's due to the state as of November 1st, and under some new guidelines from the state, every community, regardless of how much money they get in the opioid settlement, has to report how they're spending them. Previously, you had to reach a certain threshold, but now it's every town, so I'm working closely with Jill, our town accountant, on all of that, due November 1st. We have a full roster of committee members, so all of the slots are filled, we don't have any vacancies at the moment, which is great. And then lastly, in terms of just, you know, admin and sort of organizationally, we continue, one of our key, I think, pieces of our work is inviting folks from, whether they're in Western Mass or some other part of the state, who are using their opioid funds in ways that we think we might be able to take a look at and see how it applies to Belchertown. So for example, we recently, and we had, you know, wanted to bring them to a meeting, virtually, they joined us, we had folks from Boston who have pioneered this idea of what they call a family overdose support program, which is setting aside money for funeral expenses, maybe some mental health after an opioid overdose death in the family, some work and support for children who might have lost a family member to opioid overdose death, as well as helping people think about potentially some of the legal fees that they might encounter after a death in the family. So we are looking at that very closely. Obviously, the city of Boston has many more resources than we do, but we, that is something we heard at listening sessions way back when, that's the kind of thing that comes up in surveys, and those kinds of expenses are not often covered by other sources, so we're taking a look at that. So just to make note of that, something that we're looking at.
So I just want to just say one thing on that. In case, I just want to make sure everybody understands the implication of that. When, when there is an overdose, it doesn't just affect the person who's overdosed, it affects the whole family unit. And so that kind of work, and especially the unexpected expenses, and the support for siblings and spouses and other, is important. I've been reading about this, so I just want that to be out in the public.
Great.
Of why that is so important.
Exactly, and that's, you know, again, it's come up amongst our committee members, and you know, many of our committee members are involved with other organizations around substance use and mental health issues, and several of them have personal experience as well with opioid use disorder in family and friends. So absolutely, that's part of the reason why the city of Boston, in fact, even before some of the opioid settlement dollars were available, they were trying to figure out how they could fund that kind of program. And they are, in fact, very willing, and we're going to definitely take advantage of the fact that they're willing to consult with other communities, that's why we had them at our meeting. They have come up with all of the guidelines, all of the ways that you can do this, so that you have good documentation of it, as well as meet needs. At the same time, we're really conscious of the fact that in the aftermath of an opioid overdose, the death particularly, the last thing we want is to make the process burdensome. So how do you make that process, and how do you make those funds available? And they have, the Boston folks have a lot of great ideas and have been doing it for a while now, so that's just something that we're, that we're looking at. Couple of quick updates, some of which you may already know, but just in terms of some of the things that were approved back in the spring, the last time I was here. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at the Javish Brook, their after-school program, some of the recommendations that they had for the fact that they had maybe a little bit less attendance by the students than they were hoping for, but that they have some ideas. And if they should come back to our group, we've told them, if you want to look at another application, please come back to the committee as they look at that. I did want to also point out, you may have noticed that of their budgeted, their request back in the spring, they've actually returned money to the town because they did not need all of that. So that $16,000 plus might be something we'll talk about when we talk about the current application that's in front of us. So that's what happened with Javish Brook and the after-school program. You may know by now already that the Drug-Free Communities Grant, if you remember back in the spring, we had this sort of contingency plan, if the federal dollars did not come through, we would have opioid money available for that program, which is a collaboration with the schools and boat and other community groups, it's a community-wide prevention program. So they had applied for their federal grant, they and many others are not getting funded at all. In fact, the federal government made a decision not to fund any of the new applicants who would be applying for year one, or like Belchertown, were applying for the second five-year grants, the year six through 10 grant. So none of those applicants are going to be funded based out of a decision coming out of the White House and the Office of National Drug Control Policy. They will be eligible to reapply in probably February or March of next year for a September of 26th start, but at least now, we appreciate the fact that you all approved that contingency plan, so they will not have a gap at all. They will use opioid funds to cover that year and are likely, like I said, to apply probably going forward. One other quick update, there's more money coming, there are two additional settlements that are in the works, and Belchertown, I believe, has signed on to both of them, one of them is Purdue Pharma, you might know that name, it's a huge pharmaceutical enterprise, and that's going to be a very large settlement. Our state is going to get quite a large settlement, and then obviously, using the formula the state always uses, Belchertown will get that. A second lawsuit has been settled with a collection of smaller pharmaceutical and manufacturers, so that may be a smaller one, but Belchertown will benefit from that as well. These are additional monies on top of what we already have, going all the way through like 2028, almost now to, so these may go even longer, these may go out to 2030, maybe beyond that, 2020, 2035, whatever. So more money is coming for that. And other quick update, if you remember back in the spring, you approved an Honest Beginnings, the sober housing program that we have here in Belchertown for men who are in recovery or looking to get additional support for their recovery. They are on track with the number where you approved to pay for some of the funds, the cost rather, of new enrollees, and some of the expenses that go along with being a new enrollee into that program. And they're pretty much on track. They had predicted and thought that maybe two enrollees would be looking per month, would be looking for opioid funds to support their enrollment and joining the program, and they're pretty much on track for that, so just to give you a quick update on that. Let me stop there and see if you have any questions, I know that was a lot of bullet points, like I said, and then we can talk about the new application from Honest Beginnings.
My other question, Gail, thank you for coming and always being so thoughtful and explaining everything so well to us.
Sure.
I was very interested in the results from the Javish Brook project.
Yeah.
And so it does sound like, even though they said it wasn't the numbers they're hoping for, they feel it was positive program, so they will run it again?
That's a really good question, I want to check with the, with the folks there. I know that when they applied for opioid funds, they also said they were looking at other sources of funding, so I'll definitely check with the principal and whatnot, mostly also to let them know that if they want to come back and reapply for opioid funds, whatever other funds they might have. So I honestly don't know, but I'll double-check on that, just to be sure.
I wonder, you know, and just if this is something that, there's more data behind longevity, and so that over time, they would see the results of this.
Exactly.
In the student population after a few years.
Right, exactly, and in fact, that to me, that was one thought that I had as well, with, you know, just doing it for, at least in this context, doing it with the opioid funds for just a year. I know our committee would be open to the idea of a longer term, so then you could look at some of those impacts. And also to remind ourselves as well, that the opioid funds can be used, say for example, you know, boat and the schools and whoever wanted to look at making sure they could do that kind of evaluation, you can use these funds to support.
Right.
You know, the whatever evaluation plan you put in place.
Even maybe a longitudinal study.
Some kind of study, exactly, maybe teaming up with a local university, you know, teaming up with other folks in the area, the Quabog Hills Substance Use Alliance that works with a bunch of towns, they're based in the town of Ware, but they deal with a lot of communities, including Belchertown. For example, they have an epidemiologist on staff, so that might be a way to do some kind of longer-term assessment of the impact of that kind of prevention program.
Thank you.
On the boat, I don't know if you, you probably didn't submit this, I think the public school was in our packet, BPS Boat Additional Information, I read the 113 pages, I'm crazy, I know, sorry. But on page 44, it goes from 125,000 to 1,186, 86, 1,867,500, I think it's a typo. On page 44, or there's a lot of money being misused, so I'd like to just get that into the record that it gets fixed.
Okay.
So I don't think it's, maybe it's you or the schools, but it's page 44, that additional, it's a big difference in numbers.
Thank you for, you know, as they, as I said, they applied for that five-years' worth of funding, which is, you know, not, unfortunately, through no fault of their own, nobody in that application pool is getting funded, but yeah, that would have been for 125,000 a year for five years. There have been conversations about whether this program, you know, at the national level will ultimately be a 15-year program, but nothing's been decided just yet, but thank you for pointing that out.
Good catch, good catch.
Do you want to get with Brian, I'm not sure.
I have, on Cade's 80, you mentioned what the two, the two issues were that. the, the two issues were that, uh, that you felt were the reasons why you experienced a lower turnout than anticipated.
For the after-school program, you mean, yeah, for Javishbrook, yep.
Um, what, you know, is, is what, how are you addressing those? Like competing commit, commitments such as sports, family responsibility, and other extracurricular activities. I'm not sure how you address that. But the one that feels like you might be, you might have some work to do to get creative is the second one, declining engagement over time despite staff efforts to increase attendance through outreach and incentives. So, you know, there could be a whole creative conversation about, well, those tactics didn't work, you know, what, what tactics might work? And, you know, your, your partners in Boston may have ideas. Other regions might have some ideas, um, but, you know, to see if you can increase by taking on the weaknesses and making them, you know, strengths.
Right. I appreciate that. I think at the, you know, at the end of their report as well, I think they, you know, they also laid out, um, that they do admit that, and, and thinking about ways to be sure that even prior to offering whatever activities they're proposing, that they get more input from students and families, right? So at that level, so that you know that what you might be offering is of interest, more interest. Um, and then also thinking about the scheduling concerns.
Echo canceling.
Sorry, technical, I can stop there if there's a technical.
Not sure if it's on.
Yeah.
I think the echo went off.
Yeah, I thought I heard like a who.
It was like a who.
Was there a noise, yeah, coming from up there? We're good? You wanna check, you want, I can stop for a minute while you check on technology.
Should I continue, or?
Just hold on.
Okay.
Terry's on, can you check?
Yeah, maybe ask Terry. Oh, okay. Robert Deemer just said what happened to the video and sound.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yeah, it came from this, and it gave like a hoot. I was like, I didn't know it actually did that. Robert Deemer, can you hear us? No.
How do you know if they're talking to you?
What if he can hear me?
No, no, sorry. Where did you see that? I don't see anything.
Oh, it came up.
Is it chat?
It, like where settle, settings are, it just came up as a message. You know, Amazon went down today, so.
Can we get Robert Deemer to unmute himself and say that he can hear us?
I think we just click on him. I like the music. Same. It's like peaceful, it's like meditation.
Really, I think it sounds like an alarm. It's just like a nice way to wake up.
Sound is bad.
Oh, really?
He said sound is bad.
Can we turn it off and turn it back on again?
Owl, stop.
Yeah. Owl. Be quiet. Is it, is it a connection or something?
I'm really curious why the thing is singing.
Where's it coming from now?
TV.
Oh, geez.
Is it someone's phone, or?
Oh, it might be his computer.
I thought it was from his computer, too.
Is everybody muted? Yeah.
They're here.
Can you hit mute?
Oh, come on.
Is it testing the system, is that why?
It said, just then, it said, no microphones.
It's like we're in a waiting period or something.
Oh my god, and there's the boiler. And there's the boiler, isn't it?
We'll have to like restart the meeting, go back in.
What were you gonna say?
Restart the meeting.
You know, I was just thinking that like ten seconds ago. Maybe, do we just restart the meeting?
Probably.
We have to do that in a meeting this week, for some.
Does that mean we lose everybody, though?
Yeah, they have to get back in.
They have to come back in, right?
It's only whatever appeals, the sound didn't work.
All right, maybe we got it.
Do we get it?
Good now.
Yeah?
Good now.
Oh, you, you read that?
It says it right there, good now.
Okay.
Oh, it said how to fix the singing sound, you reboot it.
Okay.
I think you did it without realizing.
Well, I hope everybody enjoyed that musical.
Musical insert.
Um, Gail, do you have anything else to add?
I do, uh, it's a good reminder. Uh, thank you for all the comments and questions. Um, I think what I'll do is invite the folks from Javishbrook. We just said our October, we're gonna meet a week from today in the morning. Um, we said our October, later October, meeting, but I'll kinda have them come maybe to our November or December meeting, um, just to find out more about what they're thinking, what their experience was, uh, with this program, how, if at all, the opioid money might be of interest to them in the future. Um, and then as you said, Lisa, how are they thinking about, uh, again, regardless of whether it's opioid or other funds, um, how are they thinking about this kind of program going forward based on what they saw while they did this program? Great.
And would you send back, uh, a huge debt of gratitude for the work that they do, um, that, uh, we, we care about it? And, um, and also just some of your numbers. Uh, certainly a shout-out to Chris Hoag and to Alina Mata. Um, but the numbers speak for themselves. Um, votes committees went from eighteen to eighty-six, uh, which is a four-hundred-and-seventy-seven percent increase. I thought that was a funny number, I love it. Um, and, uh, a hundred nonprofit organization partnerships, as well as several local businesses. That really says something about, um, you know, the, the collaboration and just working together, um, that we're doing as a community. So, send a thank you.
I will, absolutely.
Thank you.
As you say that, it reminds me that this coming Friday is the beginning of another community collaboration, uh, modeled after what the Palmer Library started. So at our local library on a Friday afternoon will just be resources like boat and the recovery center and Honest Beginnings and other groups. People can just drop in and talk to someone about where, whatever their concern might be, learning about not only substance use disorder, but also, um, housing, food, other kinds of resources that are in the area, transportation. Um, so, and Chris is helping to organize all of that, so.
Yeah. Um, that's great. Uh, what time is that?
I think it's three o'clock.
And is it every Friday now?
It's gonna be once a month.
Once a month.
Um, starting out at least, once a month. Uh, might, might go, you know, might increase in frequency. Uh, Palmer started out once a month, and they went to like twice a month, and I think now Palmer might be even there more frequently in their library.
And would that be in the open?
Um, actually, I believe they're gonna be in a, a location where people can have more of a private conversation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay.
Right, I know I'm under time crunch here and you've got a long agenda. Um, unless there are other questions on any of the updates. Um, the current application that I'm here to speak about tonight is a, a second application from Honest Beginnings, um, the sober home that's right here in Belcher Town. And they have put in a request for, um, doing some repair work on their driveway. Um, and although it's a different kind of application than maybe has been, uh, put in front of you for your consideration before, um, for a number of reasons, our committee has, has talked about it, read through the application. Um, as you know, we have two board members of Honest Beginnings on our committee who were, uh, not involved with the vote, but the rest of the committee, uh, supported this application. Uh, particularly law enforcement, our law enforcement representative, Neil Rozier, talked about the issues of safety, good maintenance of the grounds. I guess our rationales for supporting this, remember that they are certified by the statewide organization that's called the Mass Sober Homes, Association of Sober Housing. Um, so keeping your building and grounds in good working order is a part of that. Um, also, based on the application and in talking with the staff there, particularly Nick, um, thinking about, you know, obviously they're in a neighborhood, they wanna be sure that they're being good neighbors. Um, and some of the concern about their driveway, they wanna be sure is not affecting their neighbors. Um, last but not least, um, just to be sure that we were on solid ground, we double-checked around the statewide guidelines. And doing this kind of capital expenditure, particularly for existing services around maintenance of, uh, access to particularly treatment and recovery programs, uh, is directly listed in the statewide guideline. So I just wanted to double-check that myself because, again, this is a somewhat different kind of application, uh, that we have had before, uh, before us. Um, but we feel like this is a crucial resource in our community. Um, you have supported them for getting people enrolled in the program. Um, so our committee, uh, voted unanimously, uh, to be supportive of this and to bring it to you, uh, for your consideration. Okay. Questions, comments, thoughts?
Comment.
Sure.
Um, so for me, I appreciate that, um, that Nick went out and got a quote from a Belcher Town business. Um, but I think it's really important that we are getting more than just one quote for things, um, if they're gonna be using, you know, town money, um, grant money. Um, so I would like to see him go out and get a second quote.
Okay. Um, I will say as well that, in fact, right after my, the committee met, um, happened to run into Steve in the building, and we were, we were having that conversation because it came up at our committee as well, based on, again, that this being somewhat different kind of application. You know, did we need to get additional bids? Obviously, they're not a town department. Um, so I had mentioned that in, in my conversation via email with Nick. So if that's the consensus of the select board, uh, we could certainly go back to them and, and look for additional, additional requests, additional estimates or bids.
Steve, do, is there any kind of, because I know for certain things, if it's within the town, if it's over, what, ten thousand, it's gotta go out for, um, but that necessarily wouldn't be the case in, in this situation, right?
That's correct. So the, the conversation that I had with Gail was that it would be best practice to get more votes.
Okay, but not required, even though it's a town, okay.
Well, you can make it a requirement. But I encourage you to come in with the application because we at least know what the worst case coverage is.
Okay.
Well, I shouldn't say we can't one bid, so.
Right.
It would fulfill the, the grant. Uh, if we get second, third bids and they're higher than this amount, then we go with more than the other.
Sure.
If they're lower, then the money comes back to...
I mean, isn't standard practice three?
That would be under municipal guidelines.
Yeah, but should we follow, I, I mean, I don't care. I agree that we need to get at least more than one, but, um...
I guess I'd be worried now that the number is public, like, someone could come under and, like, upbid somebody. It should be almost like a sealed bid process for the future.
And we wanna avoid favoritism, you know? I mean, I, I personally, but, uh, you, I'd go with three.
I recall we had this conversation in a, in a session about bids, didn't we?
Yeah.
And I can't, for a reason, ten thousand's in my mind, but is it three? Is that what we recall?
Uh, yeah, there were, we had...
If they're municipal, right, yeah, three quotes for under municipal guideline.
Or ten with a bid.
Ten.
Yes, exactly.
See, you were right. But I, I just think it's good practice because that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
You know, in government, maybe that's a good thing to, to adopt with this.
I know he's trying to get this done, um, before it starts just now. So per, if, I don't know how you all feel, but I would be okay with him only getting the one bid this time, but, I mean, he, he's made more than one application for, for the funds, so I would just want to see in the future, whatever else he applies for, that he's getting more than one.
Okay.
One quote, going forward.
Again, I understand that, you know, this is, this is the first time, all, everything else that we funded under the opioid funds has been primarily internal to either Belcher Town with boat and the, and the schools. This is really the first application where an outside vendor is being asked to, you know, fulfill the terms of, you know, because they themselves are not gonna do the driveway repair. They need an outside contractor to do that.
Nicole is bringing up an excellent point because, um, you wanna show goodwill.
Sure.
Always, and, you know, it's like, why did they pick him? You know, I could've done it, you know? And so it, it's just, it, it's good PR and it's just the right thing to do.
Yeah.
So, are we looking, do we, should I, uh, get back in touch with folks there for one or two? What's, what's the consensus of the, of the group? And Steve, if you have recommendations?
Do you wanna let it fly for, or do you wanna let it slide this time around?
That's what I was thinking, we could...
And then require it going forward?
I think we gotta set a standard and hold to that standard. You said you mentioned it last time?
Yeah, no, it was several meetings ago.
That was something different.
Spring, perhaps, yeah.
Can you come back, when's the next meeting, November?
Right, we have, yeah, when's your...
We've got full agendas, too.
Right.
Yeah, we have, next meeting's in two weeks, November third, but I think you're gonna miss your number of markets.
Uh, I mean, I, I agree.
To get the work done.
I agree with you, John. Like, let, like, let's set a, here's, here's what we're gonna do. But, you know, I think because of timing.
Is he on?
We do, too.
Do we know if Nick is on?
Um, I didn't see him, I was looking earlier.
I have one more comment on this. It'd be nice to have pictures in the future, since we're doing projects. It'd be nice to show for the public, like, how the road's destroyed. I mean, I've driven, drove out there, drove out there, what am I gonna say? And checked it out and saw the damages, but it'd be nice for the public to see this in their reference, so we're not just paving some parking lot.
Yeah.
If that makes sense. It needs it, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not disagreeing with it, so I just want the public to know.
That's a, that's a good point, John, actually, for, you know, for this or any other applicant, you know, that might be looking at something that's more of a buildings and grounds kind of project. A photo always is helpful.
And if you're, if you're going down that route and you wanna show the good work that you're doing, um, then if you could, uh, you know, snapshot some of the data.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't think you can snapshot the programs, um, but you might be able to snapshot the, um, the instructor, you know? Um, uh, just to, so that people see, this is real.
Right.
You know? Um, this isn't just, you know, this is really happening. Anyway, that, um, thank you.
Okay. So what I understand is I'm needing to get in touch with Nick to get one more bid before you take any official action on this.
I think we can vote on a dollar figure, and if you get a lower bid, just go with a lower bid. Right, you, I would be okay with that.
That would be my recommendation.
I would agree with that, yeah, that, that's fine. And then in the future, it should be three.
Then look at the three bids, again, for whether it's Honest Beginnings or anybody else who's looking at this kind of project for funding. Makes sense. I hear that.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that they allow thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, up to thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars to pave the driveway of Honest Beginnings with opioid funding money.
Perfect. Um, great. Okay. Further discussion?
Do, do we wanna add to that, the component that he go and get that second quote, and if it comes in lower, that, who's, who's the deciding, um, the deciding committee or board that's, that's gonna make that, that's gonna say, yes, go with this lower quote? Is that gonna be us or opioid settlement?
You all actually are empowered to make any of the actual monetary decisions. The opioid, our, our committee comes to you with our recommendations, but you ultimately have the authority for the bottom line.
If we are approving up two, then I don't know that we need to, I mean, as long as they don't go over.
Is the assumption that he's gonna go with the lower quote?
Well, here's the thing, lower quotes doesn't always mean.
I know.
It's, exactly. So, um.
Are we leaving it at his discretion to decide which quote he goes with?
He applied for the grant. They're recommending the grant. We're deciding yes or no, right? Like, that's how this is working.
Yeah. Steve, what would you say?
I think, uh, my view of the application, I thought the cost was fairly reasonable. It might shake a lot, but you're gonna see.
I don't either.
I would move ahead with the motion that's on the floor.
Yeah, that's what I, I'm thinking.
The opioid committee has a proven track record of returning funds when they're not used, so.
And they wanna see this work, so.
And I think they can manage this perfectly fine. They can ask for rescinding of the grant for the second quote. Monitor the work. Can you return any funds that are available? That's why we empower them to manage these funds.
I totally agree with that, but I might be, anybody in disagreement?
No.
Are you okay?
I'm okay.
All right. So, a motion has been made, and second, and any other further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your time and your support of all of this, and I'll get in touch with the Honest Beginnings folks.
Perfect.
Thanks, Gail.
Preview of coming attractions, too late for our meeting this month, but another application has come in with respect to Boat, um, and some of the youth work that they're doing, so we'll bring that to your attention in the near future.
Yeah, come back, let us know what's happening.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, Cliff McCarthy is up next for a continued discussion on the governor's plan to bring back nuclear power back to Massachusetts.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for, um, having me back. Somewhere in your packets, I think, is, uh, draft language for a letter that I'm hoping that you'll sign, um, to our state representatives. Just to review quickly, last time I was here, we talked about, um, section forty-five of House Bill forty-one, forty-four, which would repeal a statewide, re- repeal a law, the nineteen eighty-two law that was passed that would require a statewide vote for any further development of nuclear power or nuclear waste in the state, or, um, a compact regarding either of those two things, an interstate compact. The governor has, um, decided that she wants to repeal that bill so she can proceed, um, more easily with a plan for reinstituting nuclear power plants, um, across the state. But I'm really not here to get into an extended argument about the pros and cons of nuclear power. There's a lot to be said on, on both sides of that issue, but I think it's really important that we not lose the democratic process, that we not lose the ability to weigh in and decide this issue. And so, and have a, you know, conversation that's, you know, based in, um, in fact, and, and be transparent about what's going on. So, um, this bill is before the, mm, the committee. I don't remember, it's the Joint Committee on Energy, whatever. And, um, it's being fast-tracked, so I'm told, um, for passage or at least action sometime, um, in early November. I don't know if that's necessarily gonna happen. I can't predict what the legislature's gonna do, but that's, my insiders have told me that. And so, I would really like to get this, um, letter out to our representatives as soon as we can.
Okay.
So, the letter's on page one oh eight.
Yep. One oh, actually, one oh seven and one oh eight.
If we pass this letter, can we correct the spelling of my last name?
I didn't put that in.
No, but it's in, an important point. It's, it's wrong on both letters. Any other further discussion on this? I'm opening it up.
Um, the only, so I, I, I'm okay with the letter. I guess I also would probably wanna see, um, a copy of this letter or a, a, a CC of this letter right directly to the governor's office.
Can we do that?
Uh, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
Anyone else?
So, I looked, I looked at it, and I, I, I really, I, I take, I tried to educate myself on this whole issue. I don't feel comfortable personally signing anything from the board, and I feel like if folks feel really strongly about this, that it could come from them personally, but I, I, I'm not in favor of signing anything about this. I'm sorry. I did, I looked. I looked at it.
What is your reservation, if you don't mind me asking?
I mean, I think that some of the stuff that's happening at the federal level, and the concepts of trying to get some energy, and I know there's reservations about, I know you said you didn't, this isn't really about nuclear energy, but I think the fact that the administration is working with, uh, researchers at UMass Lowell and MIT, and I think that other, uh, nations are looking at nuclear as the future, and I think nuclear actually might be the future, and I think even our current federal administration is looking at it, so I, that's my opinion.
Don't you think we should have a right to hear the, the arguments for and against?
Yeah, I mean, there's stuff out there, so, and I couldn't really find a lot of information against, against it either. Like, I know, I read, I did read the articles that you had.
We kinda put this to bed forty years ago and didn't think we'd have to be fighting this battle, but.
I hear you, but I think, you know, forty years ago was, was a different environment, and I think it's a different environment now, so that's just my opinion.
Okay.
But I'm not in favor.
Whitney?
Um, I am of a similar mindset. We did not discuss this. Um, I, I also feel that, um, at least what I have heard, and I don't understand much, is that nuclear may be the future of clean energy. And I, I also, at a policy standpoint, we as a board have not discussed how we are going to handle letters like this, because we were getting requests to sign policy statements and our opinions and our, and our positions on things. So, I think it's fine for anyone on this board to sign as an individual. I would not want to sign as a board.
Let me just reiterate the, the point that there's room for people who believe that nuclear power is a way to go. This is asking that we have that discussion, that we put it out there, we, um, get to see what is, what the plan is and can discuss that. There's plenty of uncertainty and, um, a lot of questions that need to be answered that haven't been answered, by what we can see from the federal government's plan and what the governor's plan is. But part of the problem is we're not seeing it. Um, she's trying to do this, you know, to repeal this bill, it was, you know, very sneaky. But the discussion of her plan has gotta be above words, and we've gotta, we've gotta have that discussion. I welcome that. I don't have, I'm not running from that. I'm not asking you all to, um, to make a commitment about our energy use, but let's see what it is. Let's see what, how it will impact Belchertown, how it would impact Western Mass, and how it would impact the, the state and, and maybe New England. These are, these are bigger questions than just, you know, how much energy can we produce? But, you know, you're entitled to, you know, do what you want.
Yeah, for me, um, it, it, this isn't about nuclear power, because I, I told you this before. I don't feel one way or the other. I don't have an opinion. I'm not educated enough on it. This is about, um, basically ignoring a referendum that took place and not bringing it back to the residents of Massachusetts to hear both sides of the story and make a decision on it again. That's my problem with this, is that she's basically just pushing aside this referendum and saying, this is what I wanna do. And that's what my problem is with it, and that's why I do support the letter. Um.
John?
I agree with Nicole, and I agree with Jen, too. I mean, I don't think it's, it should be a personal matter for each of us to sign. I would sign the letter. Just as a school recently put out a physical crisis letter to all, it was our choice to sign on as individual ward members. It came across from the MTA. A couple of us signed on, a couple of us didn't. It should be individual request in my eyes. I agree with that part of it, so that's where I stand. I think we, we wanna sign it, we should sign it individually, not as a board.
If we sign it individually, are we signing a select board ma- as a select board member or as a resident of Belchertown?
I mean, you could sign it.
You can sign it as elected, yeah.
You know, you're a select one.
I'm happy to sign it. If you wanna email it to me, I'm happy to sign as a select board member.
Uh, do you agree with that?
Do, do I need to get you another letter, or is the one that you have in your packet?
Well, this one has all of our signatures on it.
That has all the signatures on it, okay.
How I feel about this is not much different than I felt the first time you came in. There's, the federal regulations against nuclear power are still good.
They're not good. There never were.
I, I'm saying that there's nothing in it that says, let's abolish the, the federal, uh, restrictions against nuclear power. And I trust that if the regulations are in place, that, I know, we had this conversation, but I, you know.
Let me just tell you a couple of things about that.
Okay.
One is, um, the Trump administration has very clearly indicated that they have a preference for nuclear power and are moving in that direction. He has gutted, Donald Trump has gutted the NRC, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, um, and taken off, not that it was ever fair or regulatory to begin with, but he's taken off all the moderate people and put his own people on that, on the, the commission, just recently. There's no way, there's no chance that they're gonna do any kind of regulatory oversight. The body has never, never been very good at doing that to begin with, but that's not what they see their job as now. They see their job as promoting nuclear power, and they're dueling away with regulations that are, that were put in place to protect the safety and well-being of people. And, um, they're, they're actively trying to undermine those things in order to facilitate the move towards nuclear power. So, you weigh that as you will. I don't, I don't trust that the regu- federal regulations are gonna be there at all. But, you know, I. Mass, this is Massachusetts, it's different, but I don't know that the federal regulations are something you can rely on.
I think one thing that came up is that we, we can all write our, our own.
Yeah.
And, um, and if that's what we desire to do, we can do that, and we can use our, our titles, you know? So, you would have, um, that support.
Whatever you do is more than is not being done, so.
All right.
I appreciate that.
Well, do I hear a motion?
Do we need one?
I don't think we need one.
Oh, we don't need one on this?
I also just wanted to add, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I actually wasn't very familiar with this, and I, I still have much to learn, but I appreciate you even informing us and informing everyone.
Thank you. I think you should be paying, everybody should be paying more attention to this, and it's gonna come up again. So, Nicole, you want me to, to get you a letter?
Yeah, just send me an email.
Um, Lisa, do you want a letter?
Yes.
Um, I will send those. John, do you want a letter or not?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I will get those to you as soon as I can.
Thank you for your time, Cliff, and like Whitney said, for all your work on this. Okay, uh, with that, Steve, I'll turn it over to you for the town manager's report.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Oh, my gosh! Oh, my gosh! Okay, yeah, we're gonna do D, D first. Yeah, yeah. Um, endorse acceptance of deed for land donations because it's time-sensitive.
Yeah, and then, uh, we do have people here from five.
All right, so, um, we'll, we'll take you up right afterwards.
So, D is, um, a land donation from the Justin, Justinville property. It's thirty-seven acres. It runs between Rockburn and Road and Shaw Street. They wanna donate that to the town. Um, the reason why we're taking out orders is because, uh, there's a deed that needs to be signed in your, in your packet. Once that's signed, it needs to go to the conservation commission.
That's right. Oh, that's right. And there, well, it's in the thing.
No, Shaw Street.
So, Shaw Street is, uh, Rockburn and Shaw, they can make a triangle between, uh.
Granby and Lido.
Yeah.
When you come to the end of Rockburn and Jen, and you go up towards your house, if you go left, Shaw Street is down there.
Off of Granby.
Yeah.
Off of Granby. Take a little piece of pie. Some of our old, uh, old select board members lives on that road.
Oh, really?
Mr. Crossup.
Yeah.
So.
There's a bunch of farmland over there.
This is, um, I've noticed, I don't know if anybody else noticed, this is their second donation this, this year of land. So, I'm just saying, just making a comment, that we had this earlier this year from the same family, I think, land that was nearby. I would like to see if we, if we, if we accept this, a, a thank you letter, um, from select board and conservation office to the Justinville family.
Do we do thank yous just as a matter of course for when, when, uh, residents donate land?
We should.
We should.
Well, I think I asked you to on the last round of donations. I'm, I'm hoping it got done.
Well, there's various reasons for donations. Sometimes they, they, you got to let it go to the tax side.
Yeah.
There's reasons, sometimes we do some.
I think a thank you is still appropriate, though.
Yeah, I think so.
Maybe not for tax purposes. If they're losing their.
Oh, if they're losing it.
If they're losing it.
But that's not what this is.
No, 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 no.
This is not that.
No.
We can send one once a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, uh, does that have to be an agenda item to say, you know, how to appreciate people for what they give? Can we do that?
Yeah.
Just make that as a matter of course.
And you say nice things to people already, sometime, or not just, you know, bills, not just tax bills.
But, yeah, um, and, you know, have it, have it come from, um, uh, the town manager and the select board.
I was gonna say, select board and conservation.
Yeah.
I wanna comment, it's not free. There is a dollar payment, so. I just wanna make sure that's on the record, that it's not.
Yeah.
There is a dollar figure, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, you have to. A whole dollar.
It's on the street from us, yeah.
There's not much you can buy for a whole dollar.
Me and Paul, it's not on the street from me, but it doesn't affect me either, so I wanna put that as a comment out there. Yeah.
Okay, um, so, what, what do we need to do on that? Anything?
We need to endorse it.
Okay.
And then, uh, sign it in the presence of an ordinary, one person.
Okay.
We sure do.
Okay.
May I ask one more question, just out of curiosity? Would this be zoned as residential or commercial?
Residential.
Residential, you know, agriculture, residential.
I think I saw, I think it's egg, egg A.
What's egg A?
Yeah, this is open space. I guess I.
Oh, just egg.
But in the interest of time.
Okay.
It's being accepted as open space. It's, it's not property that we will sell in the future. Large tracts of property are widely habitat, so if you try to. Large tracts of property are widely habitat, so if you try to make that place open space, it's a recreation.
So it would not be, there'd be no buildings on it?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Well, okay, so do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept, I move that we accept with gratitude the deed for land donation from Joseph A. Justin Bell for approximately 37 acres on Rockman Road as described in the enclosed claim deed.
Second.
At the cost of one dollar.
For consideration of one dollar.
Okay.
I just want to put that in because people might...
Okay, that's right. We know, people. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Dan, can you help us with a notary on this?
Dan, we're putting you to work tonight.
You want to do it again, Whitney?
I can unless somebody else has to have the honors.
Who's the liaison for COMCOM?
Is it me? It might be me, but I never go because their meetings are the same time as ours, so.
Where are they? Are they in the auditorium right now?
We can even take a collection and do a donation.
Oh, I have this here.
This is a group.
No, it's all right.
I like the look. Can we move to the next item? Is that okay with you, Whitney?
Who's bringing that over to them?
Is it okay we can move on to the next item? Oh, okay.
So they're going to come get it from us?
Okay, so ABCC's application.
Okay, so we have an application for change manager from Pride Corporation LLC. In the packet, 109. This is routine business. More often than not, we have local businesses in town that have a change of manager. Manager on the liquor license is not that person. We have to amend the license, so we need you to go to approve the application tonight and sign where indicated on the license application, which will go back to the BCC for approval. So in this case, there's nothing out of line here. Pride store here in Belchertown has not had any issues with non-compliance for all states. So I would more pardon the recommendation.
I make a motion we approve the application presented from Pride LLC.
Is there a second? Did you second? Jen seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Whitney has a vote. Sorry. Thank you.
I thought I heard her. Thank you.
We have the rest of this, we can bring it over to the conservation commission right now.
That's all we have is, is...
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me.
I can take it out of my packet if he needs it.
I don't think I have it either.
Oh, actually, I, oh, here, Dan.
So it passed. It passed. You're all set.
It's connected to something else. They can't give it to you.
Oh, okay. I thought you were here with...
They're here for the Austin stuff.
Oh, okay.
Oh, they have it.
They should have it.
Sorry.
So they, they have the original plan?
I've got the signature page for the...
Okay, I think they have it.
Thank you, Dan. Yes, okay, so next up?
We are going to take, let me write last name.
Yeah? Adoption of, oh, oh, yes, Lieutenant Michael Austin Memorial Scholarship Fund.
We have a document in front of us that needs to be adopted by the select board. This is to establish Lieutenant Michael P. Austin Memorial Scholarship Fund. Just to touch up my notes here. The intent of the fund provides scholarships to deserving Belchertown High School seniors who are in post-competitive education. The town scholarship committee, the local select board, will receive the award of the scholarship. They'll work like they do with the monetary contributions that we currently have. I would like to just read a little bit of this for public because I think it's important that people from Belchertown who have had certain conflicts overseas are recognized and not forgotten. There's a lot of new people in town, and people may not remember that we had Austin on the field on George Hannah Road, which is a part of the name for Michael Austin. But it says here that Lieutenant Michael P. Austin Memorial Scholarship Fund is hereby established by the town of Belchertown Select Board as the Lieutenant Michael P. Austin Memorial Scholarship Fund to honor the memory of Army First Lieutenant Michael Paul Austin. Lieutenant Austin was a lifelong resident of Belchertown who served his country during the Vietnam War. While serving as a security lieutenant leader with the Army's 299th Infantry Battalion, he was riding in a struck by an enemy rocket. Sadly, Lieutenant Austin suffered severe injuries that resulted in his death at just 22 years old. In honor of Lieutenant Austin, the town will accept donations, gifts, and requests to be used for the purpose of providing scholarships to deserving Belchertown High School seniors who wish to pursue all secondary education. And the reason this is coming in front of you tonight is because the family is wanting to donate some seed money to get this started. I don't know all those details. I don't know if they're all public. The family is here. They can discuss that if they wish to. This is a very good thing that's happening for graduating seniors.
We don't know much, I mean, it's, it's in the beginning stages, and a lot of this has been handled through emails and to other consultants and lawyers and, and financial, financial people, whatever. I do know that there is going to be some seed money that's coming in. I guess I, I need to convey the information to the source of this as to, you know, where, where the check is going and, and how it's to be written out. And I assume I can, you will tell me how I can do that, or I can check with the town treasurer or whatever, and that's really about all we know right now. As we said, it's, a lot of this has been, has been handled, you know, as I said, to the experts. But it's not a scholarship. The scholarship has been going on for 55 years. The scholarship has been going on since 1971. But this is just a change in the way it could be funded and the way it could continue.
Okay.
How is it currently funded?
Just private donations, family donations. Every, every year, a slum is gathered and presented to a graduating senior. You know, very nice, very generous. It's, it's been, it's been through the generosity of the family all the way, all the way along.
I have to tell you, this is magnanimous. And, you know, you're, you're thinking of others rather than yourselves. And, and this kind of gift can help students that, you know, for a variety of reasons, may not be able to reach their dreams.
That was the intent. The intent was started by my parents, and it was, it was intended for someone where there was a strong need, so that it would, that it would, you know, really make a difference and allow some student maybe to go to school who, you know, who couldn't at least help, help the student out with whatever, whatever we could offer.
I ran a charitable family foundation in Boston, the Rappaport Family Foundation. And so I'm very familiar with the experts and, and also what different family members may, may want. And coming together under a shared mission and doing something like this is, in, a gift to the town is not saying it the way I want to. It's just, it, it's really providing hope. And especially in these days, it's really nice to see, you know, families step forward in such, you know, a leadership way. So, thank you. Any questions?
I only have one question. It says, "Belchertown High School seniors." Is that just a town ballsey versus can it be any Belchertown senior resident? Like, we have kids that go to Pathfinders, they're seniors too, that grew up in this town, and people donate.
I'm, I'm saying...
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I'm, I'm only, I'm only part of the, the committee, and, you know, I'm not part of the final. But I'm staying in Belchertown because that was the school he attended.
Sure.
And that was the school where he played baseball, which is how the baseball field was named for him and Roger Bond, the other, the other casualty. So my preference would be Belchertown High School senior. And in talking to those of us who have contributed to the scholarship in the past few years, I think that was our frame of mind, that we were all thinking. And we have talked with, we've talked with the guidance council down there. We've talked with the town treasurer. We've been trying to get this going for, for several years and just didn't know what direction. And Sean, a cousin who spearheaded this is in Texas, so he's done a lot of legwork, you know, through the, the emails and so forth. But in all of those, my, my understanding was just Belchertown High School.
Appreciate that.
Sean, did you read this? Please write a letter directly to the town attorney.
I think he tried to send me that, but I didn't get, I didn't get that link. That was a beautiful explanation. I assume that they did some research into all the, you know, numbers and so forth.
Any, any other?
As a veteran of this committee, I would like to take the honor of adopting this scholarship in the name of Lieutenant Michael P. Austin Memorial Scholarship Fund.
Second.
Further discussion? I have one. Are there any, are, are there restrictions to who this goes to?
I'm not sure that that has been...
Hammered out?
It has been hammered out.
Yeah.
As I said, the family has always been the determining factor. We have received names and resumes and applications from the high school seniors.
Okay.
And we have reviewed them and tried to choose the candidate that we, that we think was, was best suited for it.
Okay.
Whether the criteria will change, I don't know. As, as I said, need, need was number one. So, so that it didn't have to go to a student who, who was getting nothing because there are so many scholarships now. But in looking at all the applicants, where was going to make the best, the, the most difference? And where was it really going to, maybe appreciate isn't the right word, but, but certainly where would, you know, make the most impact, I guess.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again.
So, so my question is, do, I need to get some information back to Sean. So do I talk to the town treasurer?
Yeah, town treasurer and town attorney. Sean, did you mail him?
Right.
And I'd be happy to help you with that.
Yeah, I see. I'll, I'll just, I emailed him today. I don't know if you were coming. And I wish I could, wish I could be there to attend. He's going to contact the appropriate people at the investments and, and send to me as soon as, as we have a green light. Please obtain the exact address I should use to forward to Belchertown, whoever, probably the treasurer, and ask about when it would be okay to do so. I don't know if he wanted to, if it's, if it's easier for you to do that with him. I mean, you know, he, you can just touch base with him tomorrow and tell him that it was all, you know, approved. I think, can you just read me? My only thing is, I think we wanted to say, I don't know, Lieutenant Michael, First Lieutenant. First Lieutenant is in there somewhere. It's important to us that that is included somewhere.
It is, yeah. So there is hereby established by the town of Belchertown Select Board the Lieutenant Michael P. Austin Memorial Scholarship Fund to honor the memory of Army First Lieutenant Michael Paul Austin.
All right, so I'm going to, I will probably email him tomorrow, but I mean, I guess I'll leave that to you because it seems to eliminate a step that you can just talk directly to...
I have, I have two additional things, very quickly, and that is, these are public meetings. As such, the public will know about this. Is, would it be okay with the family if an, an article went out to the local press saying that, that talks about your generosity and, you know, what you're trying to do? Either now or when you've got, you've got it all put together, just as an announcement?
It's, it's fine with me, you know, it gets, it gets the word out. We also, I, I know it's a small thing, but Steve was mentioning, you know, many people from the town don't know the history, don't know the boys who, you know...
Absolutely.
But there's a number of people in town that don't even know that a field exists to honor Michael Austin and Roger Bond.
Yeah.
And if it could get, you know, a little bit of publicity for that. Probably best once it's all been done and wrapped up, you know.
Could that be something Kate works on? And, and what we would like to do is give you the right to look at it.
Right.
You know, so that you, you sign off on it. And, and again, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for moving this up on your agenda.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
You should have brought you a couple of hamburgers.
Okay. Steve, where are we?
Massachusetts.
Okay, we're on B, that's right.
Okay, we have a maintenance building at 978 Federal Street. That is a gravel bank that's been in operation for 30 years or more. The building is 62 by 60. It's approximately 150 feet in property length. And I don't believe it'll even be visible on the street, but, you know, maybe in a long period. I don't have any concerns with it. I think I would just simply make it back to the point.
I only had one comment on the sheet that was presented to us. You can't even read it. Is that how it came across, or was that? I just wish that it would come in like nice.
You talked about this one?
Yeah, like, so I, that's my, I mean, it's hard for me to make a, I mean, I'm fine with this, but it's hard to make a decision if this was a pressing issue because it's like, especially a public document, like, should have been clearer, if that makes sense.
We have a better copy.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to make sure there was a...
That we know what we're saying, yeah.
The other page, the application page.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it didn't come in like that, that's all.
Okay.
That's okay, yeah.
That was my only comment.
Whoever printed this could fill out, it could be a lot, really.
Well, you know, I just probably was running out of ink, and...
I am picky, but it's just, it's a public document, and I think it's nice that the public can read. Like, we're not trying to push something through that's not. Sorry. Yeah, that makes, that's much clearer. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, it's not much.
But it's better than what I got. That's much better.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm assuming that it printed out in your office and stuff, but I'm not thinking that it wasn't cut through.
Okay, so we okay with remanding it back?
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes.
I move that we remand the site plan application for the erection of a maintenance building from 978 Federal Street LLC back to the planning board.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
You're up to C. Been a pretty busy few weeks. Jermaine and I have been keeping our eyes on a very difficult situation. The good news is the September plan numbers came in, $70,000 for the wall combined projections. I say combined projections as, obviously, it's going to help the town. So that's, that's a step in the right direction. So, that's, that's a step in the right direction. The bad news is for the first quarter of FY '26, there are actually two million dollars in the red.
Entire trust.
Yeah, oh, so they need to string a lot of good ones together to get back in where they need them to be. October 1st was the implementation of the rates, a twenty percent increase. So, that should help with your revenue. They also eliminated the coverage for the GLP-1 drugs, which should help with your expenses. Right now, they expect to be receiving nine point eight million dollars in monthly revenue. They currently have one point six million in reserves, so they're up very tight, tight.
Yeah.
So, this is a very, very fluid situation. So, what have we been doing? Joanne has the recent claim data. She received that last week, early last week. She's working with a broker to get a bid together to go out and test the market. It's likely that they will issue in December for July 1st start date. We're on your contract with the group insurance trust in some period. So, that'll give us some time to kind of navigate through and see what's happening. She's also working with the GIC and Maya on pricing clouds, so we're gonna, we're gonna have some contingencies in place. And at least we're gonna know whether or not we have the best pricing and the best program. So, you know, stay tuned on that. Over the next few weeks, I'll be updating on progress there. I've learned that the trust is also going out to bid. Right now, if you remember, their contract with CVS for pharmaceuticals and the prosecutor for health coverage. They're looking at bidding both to see if they can get better pricing. So, you know, it's like we're hitting this on a hundred different angles. We also received the notice that Joe Shea is retiring. He's the executive manager of the trust. And he will be leaving the number thirtieth. The executive committee is going to be able, I believe, a consultant while they search for a replacement. I don't have much more on that.
I just have one clarification question, like, on June 1st or July 1st, whatever that, the end date is of our agreement. Who, whose decision is it to leave the trust at that point? Is it the select board? Is it the employees? I just don't, just so it's, I don't- Residents are asking that question. I just don't know the answer.
Yeah.
So, I'm just trying to-
It's gonna be the select board.
Okay. So, it'll be- Gotcha.
I have, in speaking with Representative Saunders, he's filed legislation that is passed through the House. It should be going to the Senate floor Thursday. He's creating a safety net for communities. What this will allow, if any community that decides to join the trust, will have the option of the runouts if you're probably very concerned about any late-
Yeah.
-request in the cost of the town. So, runouts is a big concern once you leave the trust. And in addition to that, communities that are struggling to fund the twenty percent deficit in the future increases, can amortize those costs over three to five years, which will allow, you know, communities to not have to try to come up with all the money accounts for those things. So, basically, it's money that we would all, we wouldn't have to pay if we could come up with a better plan or even try to make cuts and cover it all in one year. We're lucky because we, you know, the cooperation of the select board, school committee, finance committee, the town council committee, they can identify all the funding sources we needed to cover that. But some towns are struggling and this will give them a little bit of a safety net. But it does come at the cost of leaving the trust because it's not available, it's a safety net. So, I would expect that to pass. I think it's a good thing that Erin is doing that for all the communities because we could find ourselves, if the trust pulled it overnight, looking at a lot of late payouts where we would be finding that. So, we're, we're also monitoring that. On the seventeenth, Friday the seventeenth, the executive committee met at four o'clock. Couple of announcements there. Again, one point six million in reserves, nine point eight million in monthly revenue. The GLP-1 drugs being eliminated and they expect by the end of fiscal year to have approximately three point nine million in reserves, based on current projections, so they're inside those reserves. That's far from where we need to be. You know, their goal is three months worth of reserves, which would put them into the twenty-seven-
Too low.
Right. But that would be twenty-seven million. And realistically, they should have six months, which would be, you know, only sixty. So, they have a long, long line to go. But right now, we, we at least have September beginning, so we'll see what October first comes in.
I have a question. So, I was in that meeting last week. I don't ever remember them saying anything about being two million in the red. Was that discussed in the executive session instead?
No, that's, that wasn't discussed in the meeting. That's-
Okay.
Listening to what they said about the last three or four months.
Okay, because a couple of things. So, first of all, are executive sessions public? Can, can I, can we attend those? Yeah.
We, I joined. They're public, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
You don't have to be in the executive committee.
Okay, so I definitely, can, can you send me those invites going forward?
Yeah, yeah, I can have Joanne.
Because, yeah, that, that two million you just brought up is brand new news to me.
Well, that's my map.
Oh, that's your, okay. Does that take into consideration the six hundred thousand a month that we're going to be saving by people not filling their GLP-1 prescriptions?
That's the existing short term.
Okay.
That, that's existing what they lost on-
Got you. So, they're gonna recover a little bit.
The first quarter of the fiscal year.
Okay, so they're gonna recover-
Thirty-five million dollars in collections. That's, that's what I was trying to-
Got you. So, they're gonna recover a little bit with the six hundred thousand dollars a month of savings of not having to fill the GLP-1s. Remember, he said there, that even though September claims were good, there was a spike in prescriptions. And if you want to take a guess at what that is, that's everybody going to make their last fill on their Ozempic or their whatever. So, that should go way down too, but I'm glad he's leaving. They need somebody, they need fresh set of eyes in there and somebody who's willing to implement even the simplest of accounting systems.
Yeah, I, I-
He can go.
I agree. I, I think it's time that having, whether Joe Shea left or not, having a consultant come in and look at the programs and make recommendations makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Why that didn't happen, I don't know, but this is an opportunity to get somebody in there to look at that. I, I still don't know why they're not proposing, not the coal base, the deductibles.
Oh, yeah. Well, I thought he said they were looking at deductibles in the, in the public meeting. He did say that, I thought.
I don't know. Maybe that's part of this new bid that they're putting out.
Okay.
So, I don't know for sure. And, and that's part of the problem. This is, there's, there's a lot of moving parts. It's very fluid. We're just trying to keep up with what they're saying and what's happening.
Well, I'm also hoping they're gonna take a look at the, the role and decision-making authority of, of the executive committee because-
So, they have people running for, so they're, they're doing a renewal of that? And there are new members that are running for the position?
But also, like, just, the bottom line is, he blamed the executive committee. He totally abdicated his role as the executive director and blamed them for, for this. And that, that, that's wrong. So, it's not just a, that whole thing needs to be looked at. You know, like, what is the role of the executive committee? What is the authority and sign off, you know? There has to be a check and a balance. You can't just throw-
Well, it's written by Mass General Law.
Yes.
In, you know, he's not wrong when he says, I'm making this recommendation. The committee's gonna do whatever they're gonna do. I mean, that's all correct. I just don't know how strong of a, of a convincer he was and an educator he was to the committee members. Like, I don't know how well he educated them on what they were up against.
I just don't, I, I, it just doesn't pass muster with me that the executive director blames people who meet, what, once a month?
Well, I think the fault falls on him if he didn't educate them properly.
Okay.
I have one question. Did any of the seventy-two units leave yet, or do we know if they're all still part of the tr-? So, they're all still in?
I believe they're all in there. There, there was a lot of, I don't know the numbers, and I guess, I'm not sure if it's percentage-based. If, oh, a lot is the correct term, but there was quite a few people that dropped coverage in enrollment period, that, that the special open enrollment period that they have, so they either left for another policy or joined, you know, their spouse's policy under, you know, another employer. So, some of that may help keep costs down.
Yeah. And I've asked Steve to look at, because we're one of the three, the, the-
Yeah.
With the most percentage. And East Hampton and South Hadley.
They're still in it.
Yeah, so, and to really pay attention to what they're doing, because, I mean, everybody's important, but I do want to pay close attention to them.
So, today Harvard Pilgrim laid off three hundred employees. So, there's a lot of just instability.
Yeah, in the industry.
In the industry overall.
Yeah.
May I ask a technical question? So, we have a special town meeting coming up a week from today.
Yeah.
If that article were not to pass to move money out of stabilization, what happens? Are we still covered with health insurance?
Yeah, there's, there's some accounting maneuvers that we could take. Regardless, we have to have a balanced budget at some point.
Yeah.
So, we are lucky because we are going to increase in taxes to our residents to cover this. We were doing savings from our government.
Yeah.
I, I don't see why it wouldn't pass, but if it doesn't, then we're gonna have to, well, if Erin's legislation passes, that would give us some of the, if we decide to do it. And there's also some other means that we may be able to temporarily fund it, but eventually, we're gonna have to go back to town meeting and balance that.
Right.
So, we're gonna have to-
If not now, then I-
But, you know, it, some communities, they're making some pretty draconian cuts. And, you know, our, like, the libraries only open a couple of days a week or-
Or the seniors center.
Yeah, or the senior center, or, you know, I mean-
We're not gonna notice.
No.
We're cutting, we're not doing, so it's, you know, little amounts from each department. We were lucky because we got, you know, again, I, I go back to the finance committee and the select board over the last few years, really protecting our stabilization money and growing it.
And we want to continue to grow.
Yeah, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna put that money back. We're borrowing from ourselves. That's why it's there. It's, it's a great thing to have that.
Yeah.
So, not only will we put that money back, but we're gonna continue to add money to it. We got really lucky due to the property insurance. You know, we, we factored in a ten percent increase in our property insurance and we ended up coming in under last year's numbers. So, all of that reincrease plus savings is going to health insurance. So, it's a simple transfer.
Yeah.
The school department having savings. We have, you know, our DPW, I think, had one of the bigger, on the town side, had one of the bigger transfers. And due to a vacant position, we've been struggling to fill, so we're not gonna notice that because of the savings that we're-
Oh, I was talking about other towns.
Yeah, but other towns are-
I think draconian cuts, like, we don't have to do that. And hopefully, if this passes, we, we wouldn't have to do that.
Yeah.
That's-
You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
You know, and I think Erin appreciates what's happening here at Belcher Town and at the same time, realizing other towns are not as fortunate. They're not as good a financial shape as we are, so.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah.
Okay. E, thank you, Jen. Endorsed letter of support for Pathfinder CTE grant application. So, the one thing I asked Steve to do, if it's okay with the board, is have all of us sign that, not just me. Because it's a, it's a big deal and I, I just feel like it's something we'd all want to do. Now, there, unless you feel otherwise. But the thing is, we have to get this out this week. So, if we do do this, we'd also have to, like, be able to come in, like, tomorrow and sign the letter. So, so it's up to you what you want to do.
Yep. I make a motion that we write a letter in support of the Pathfinder CTE grant application to be signed by the entire board.
Do I hear it?
I will second it.
Any further discussion?
And you said we need to come in to physically sign it by close of the business tomorrow?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, yes.
Yeah, wait. Yeah, but can I come early?
Yeah.
Like eight-thirty?
Well, I haven't been by eight fifteen.
Perfect.
All right. Any other further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent.
All right, E F, G, Gold Kane.
Oh, the gold.
The gold cane.
The gold cane.
The old gold cane.
Last meeting, the, not at the last meeting, the last meeting just came up with a question, there were two questions. One was, what is the most effective and accurate way to identify the oldest resident of Belcher Town? I agreed to go back and talk to the town clerk about local census data. She agreed that we can identify that person. And once we do that, we can reach out to see if they're willing to accept the award. If not, we go to the next oldest person in Belcher Town. I, I think I cautioned the board. I didn't want to show, like, the sweepstakes people and say you won, because they might not want the recognition.
That's true.
So, if the board's okay with that, we can, you know, adopt this policy with that change. And then the other question the board had is whether ten years was too lengthy of the timeframe for somebody to be considered a resident for purposes of the Gold Kane Award. If we want a reward after a, you know, different, we can do that. So, that's up to you.
Who wrote the initial policy? Is that a select word, select word in Belcher Town? Did it come from the state?
Well, the Boston Post Kane Program is a, is a state program. The policy was developed locally. It was under the task of board members, that was the chair, where this came out. So, we can, we can make the policy.
I'm ready to put this to bed.
Yes, do it.
I'm ready to make a motion that we accept the policy with the change of the town clerk added as pulling the record for the Boston Post Kane policy as written, presented in front of us.
I hear a second. Further discussion? Me.
Will there be cute little pens? Do we decide on the cute little gold pens?
No, I, I think ten is too long and I wondered if we could split the baby and say seven.
Let's not split me babies.
I'd like to leave it at ten. It's how it was originally written.
Does it have to be consecutive? What if they went away and then they came back? We're splitting babies. Okay, so, so, are you asking for an amendment?
I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at, you know, not make it five, but not make it ten.
We'd have to vote no, and then it could come up with a different iteration. Like, we can vote on it and then how the votes come into play.
Oh, I see, okay. All right, okay. So, made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, what are we doing?
Well, yeah, I got confused.
So we're voting on the
Just the policy.
The motion and the second, and with no changes.
No changes, just as it's written.
If it fails, you can amend it and change, like, if it, if the three of us said no.
There was one change using the clerk's information.
Yes.
Yes.
So that was the only change that was included in the motion, so.
And, and I do, and I, I wasn't actually kidding about the little gold, little gold thing. So are they, are we still, this is to still have it be a wooden cane?
Eh, that's the thing.
No, is that still, we're gonna go to, like, a...
Aren't I looking at the right, there's two versions.
No, it says that they're gonna get a letter and a memento.
Yeah.
The cane stays in town hall.
All right, so the nineteen oh nine cane is, is just a relic on the wall.
Hanging upstairs on the second floor.
Okay.
The plan is to issue a certificate with some sort of a lapel pin.
A small keepsake.
Great, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, uh, you said...
Are we all clear on the motion?
Yeah.
Well, this is, is this version, the strike through. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm opposed.
So all in favor? Can we try that again? Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Great. Let's move on.
You're not moving, you're staying here.
Forever.
Fine, I'm staying here. I just feel bad for the new people.
Over, you're a long time ago. Or you are the oldest person. You'll, you'll hit the ten-year mark.
I'll bring you your pen.
Yay, okay, next.
I'm sad to see this go from the agenda.
Okay, um, individual board report discussion. So I put this on the agenda, um, but not because I'm the only one that, that thought of this. We give our, um, our board reports every meeting, um, but it's kind of a list of, I went here, I went there. And, um, uh, it's been suggested that, um, we might want to, um, uh, do two things. One, when we talk about what, what, when, that you went to the meeting, that you report back on what happened in the meeting, what's going on with that group, um, so that, uh, is a way to share information more, and so that we all have a feel of what's happening. Um, and, uh, and then the second thing is that, um, you can choose not to, to talk about a particular thing you went to if you have nothing to add to it. You can, you can't, but it's not just a straight-up list.
Got it.
I think because, um, in light of, uh, you know, you had mentioned during one of our last, most recent meetings that you felt like you weren't sure, like, what was happening with certain, you know, so like, if you're a liaison to a group, like, the intention, I think, behind a board member report is to bring the highlights, like, what is happening with that group.
Yeah.
As opposed to, you know, just attending the meeting, right? Like, it's, you know, and if there's nothing to report, then there's nothing really to report.
That's what.
And I think...
You said it better than me.
That makes sense, yeah, yeah. No, that makes sense.
So, uh, do we need to vote on that?
No.
No.
Okay, good. So that's all.
If other people have thoughts.
Do you, do you have thoughts on that?
Not really, I guess, not at this point. I guess the biggest thing is I just wanna know. I'm gonna bring this up for discussion, I guess we're not discussion, like, the chancellor visit. I felt like, I didn't know anything about it. I felt blindsided as elected official. People are asking me questions in town about it, cause it was all posted over social media, and I was like, what, what, what? Like, in it, I couldn't answer him, and I felt awful about it. It's not, it's a good thing for the town, I don't wanna say it wasn't a good thing, but we knew nothing, like, I knew nothing about it personally.
That's, that's a whole reason for board reports.
And it's not a bad thing, I just think it's sharing information, that's all.
So that's what this would do.
Well, to kind of piggyback off of that, and I, I, I said this in our last meeting, but you had already, you had to leave early.
Yeah.
Is that, you know, certain meetings are going to happen, they have to happen, they're not always going to have all of us there. But I want us to be more collaborative in the future about who we send from our team to represent at certain meetings. And, trust me, I said it at the last meeting, I was not your person for this UMass chancellor meeting. But I wanna make sure that we're all talking about this collaboratively and putting our best person forward, um, at these meetings. I don't want it to just be assumed that, you know, it should be these two that go, maybe you should talk about it.
I, I, I don't disagree. It's, I, I think that because of our liaisonships and the natural, you know, like, if we're doing, you know, health insurance, it's you, you know? If we're doing the regionalization, it's gonna be Whitney and you, you know?
But let's talk about it.
Yeah, I, I mean, uh, so I, I feel like the people who are liaisons to their stuff are probably the ones that should go. In this particular case, there, there is no liaison to that.
You do have somebody who works at a local college that could have been considered.
Yeah.
I just wanna have a collaborative conversation and know that we're all involved going forward in who we're putting forward. That's all.
No, I think that's fair, and then also, you know, then we have a better idea what everyone's doing, and maybe we'll say, and that's a really, that's a strong interest of mine, you know, can I be involved? And we can trade off. Um, also, not to be two-pointed, but, um, you know, the MVP two-point-oh stuff came up. And had we been doing more board reports throughout the year, I don't think we would have been in the position that we are in, where we weren't able to, to move forward.
Yeah.
So I think it's a great discussion topic, and I'm hoping that we can learn from it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, no, I, I, I totally agree. And, and things changed. I mean, I was the one that first brought up childcare, um, for, when we were having town meetings. And this became a real interest of yours, and so I passed it over to you. So, you know, it, uh, so I'm not, I'm using that as a way of saying, it can be done.
Sure.
But, um, it's, um, there is, I think, I wanna say the obvious, where I do think there's obvious choices for some things that we're doing, not everything. But, um, like, I would never be your person for health insurance, you know, or for, uh, you know.
Um, may I ask a question I've always wanted to ask, now feels like the right moment? Um, I do not wanna make board reports longer, but if I ever have a question, what is prob, we don't really use Robert's rules formally, we use them pretty loosey-goosey, but can I ask a question to a board member as they are giving their report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why not? Yeah, doesn't he all get the answer?
Sure.
But, um, yeah.
Okay.
So, since we just discussed this tonight, I'm not saying that this is what we need to do tonight, but moving forward. But if there is anything, um, like I did want us to talk about the meeting with UMass, um, to...
Sure.
To, um, when we get to that point, to, you can or cannot, but moving forward.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And now, it's over to our fabulous town manager.
All righty, um, well, as always, I endorsed Lawrence, so we can pay her bills and payroll. In response to some recent, um, events in town hall, um, we had de-escalation training for town hall employees. We had over twenty attendees, um, for a three-hour training, and it was, um, very informative. Not everything is a perfect fit for the building and our employees, but I think the concepts and, and the topic was, was timely. And I hope it helps. Um, we're still taking some other measures. We're looking at, um, installing additional security cameras, changing locks on doors, uh, maybe changing some of the physical characteristics of the offices to create more of a barrier between, um, people coming in and our employees. So there's still a lot of work to do, um, but, you know, this was the first step, just to give people better awareness of their situations and how to control them and, and how to protect themselves. So, um, it was, it was a good, good training. I did meet with the Mill Valley Snowmobile Club for, uh, to provide them an update on the Mass Central Rail Trail. Um, I didn't have a lot to say, that, that project's been stalled up, um, with the railroad, and I don't know when we're gonna see that, um, bottleneck, uh, free itself up. It appears as though we're gonna have to find money to have them review the plans, and that seems to be the problem, um, they're not being cooperative at all. So we may talk about maybe making some des, the, design revisions, or just simply, uh, trying to maybe advocate with our legislators for some funding to get the railroad moving. Spent a lot of time preparing for the chancellor's meeting, um, I met with the chancellor, um, we had a great group, what a team. That was like an A-team. Very well attended, um, you know, good conversations, and, and I'll let Jen and Lisa talk a little bit more about that. But I think that, um, the chancellor was happy, he came out to visit with us and, and left with a good impression of Belcher Town. Conducted interviews for the grant coordinator, I did final interviews, I had two of them. I'm happy to report that on November third, um, Don Coty will be starting as our new grants coordinator.
D O N or D A W N?
Uh, D A W N.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering the same thing, too.
She, um, has a pretty impressive resume, and I think she's gonna be a very good fit.
What's her last name?
Coty, C O T E.
Are you able to share her resume with us, just out of curiosity? I understand you hired her, but I'm just curious about the background.
Is she a Belcher Town resident?
Yes.
Jen, um, also wants to see it. I don't know, maybe you can...
I can send it around.
All right, great. November third, or...
Yeah, she'll be here. All right, um, I attended the branding committee meeting. We're still trying to figure out the best avenue forward to get the town seal updated. Terry's gonna be getting some quotes, she's on here tonight, so we'll see what happens with that. I've been attending Sports Haven Mobile Home Park, um, construction progress meetings, as well as, um, our monthly meetings with the Attorney General's Office to talk about the project and steps forward. The contractors really making some progress down there. We just authorized them to, um, pick up two additional phases of work. One of, one of them is, um, in, in relation to the sewer infrastructure, and the second is the, um, reconstruction of the roadway. We are hoping that by the end of, um, this construction season, which could happen any day now, that all of the road work, all of the work under the road is complete.
Wow.
And that the road will be restored, so that in the spring, um, any remaining work will happen outside of the road, so the road won't have to be toured and backed up. But this way, it, the site will be restored. We'll still have a water tank to install, connections to make to the individual units, the septic system. We're still looking for funding. We don't have enough funding to complete the project. Um, the water system will be complete, the sewer system will not be complete until we get additional funding, so, um, we had...
Have to get federal funding or state?
We have some right now. We have an EPA grant that's nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand. We're hoping to get some additional EPA money and some state DEP money.
Okay.
We applied for a one-stop grant for housing, and we were denied.
Okay.
We are gonna be following up with the people at the one-stop program to find out, you know, what we can do in the future, if necessary. We may be asking for some additional CPA funds for housing, for affordable housing, to try to move some more work along. Four years ago, we were granted a hundred thousand dollars for this project through CPA funds. Um, that money will be spent by the end of October.
Is that directly to the main CPA, not through our CPC?
Well, it, it goes to the CPC and then town meeting, so that money wouldn't be available till July one. Which is, you know, we're trying to get this done sooner.
Yeah.
We're gonna be reaching out to our legislators, and again, DEP and EPA. Sometimes there's leftover money in grant programs that they can allocate towards projects that are unfunded.
How much money do you need to complete the project?
Um, minimum about one point six million.
Oh, wow.
Okay, that's bigger than I...
I know, were you thinking fundraiser?
It's gonna be, uh, when this project's complete, it's gonna be upwards to four million dollars of infrastructure and work. So, you know, it's a big project. Moving on, um, there's been a lot of work on the TADGIL feasibility study. Um, as you heard, one of the residents tonight came in. I, I just wanna clarify that phase one of the feasibility study is complete. I believe that report is posted on the website. I, I'm surprised that it's not, if it's not. There is already a preliminary price tag of four point two million dollars for that building to bring it up, to, um, to repair some structural issues, doors and windows, and about two million dollars for a new roof. So it's already starting to build. We know that, and depending on, um, what is identified for the reuse of the building, the, uh, cost to reconstruct that or to rehab that's gonna increase from there. We don't know what that is yet. We should know by the end of the year. The consultants working on this thought that they'd have the project wrapped up by the end of the calendar year. So we'll know more. Right now, there's a survey that's been published on our website that is asking people for guidance on what they would like to see the building reused for.
Have we had that survey before?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
So many, so many.
But I, I think, you know, we needed to freshen that up, because this portion of the, the project is identifying the use.
No, I, I was approached saying, I already did this, no, I don't have to do it again, so, and I just wanted to say.
Public outreach?
Yes, that's gonna be the next step, is some public outreach and, and having some public forums. So that, that's why we wanted to refresh the data.
Okay.
And I know, you know, people may get survey burnout.
Yeah.
They don't have to answer it, but we're not gonna throw away the, the old results. We're gonna take the old results and add them to the new results. We're hoping we can hit some new people.
Can I just ask how long ago it was?
I don't remember when the original one was. Yeah.
I don't know that we've ever had one specific to TADGIL. There's just so many surveys.
Okay, maybe that's it, cause I, I've been told I already did this.
We had one that was about the area around the rec department.
You know what, that's why I'm asking.
But I don't think we've ever had anything specific.
All right, well, that's good to know.
But I, I do think all the buildings were included in that, TADGIL six and eight.
Okay.
Yeah. So we, we know that.
Okay.
You know, it's, at some point, if we don't ask, somebody's gonna say, why didn't you? If we do, they're gonna say, why did you?
Yeah, I know.
If we ask, they say, you know, why are you asking me? You get paid to do this. And we, we hear this all the time, you know?
And I'm sorry if this is out of order, but since we are using the word survey, is it possible? We don't need to know everything, but is it possible, we know a townwide survey's going out, just for a heads up?
Yeah, we can.
Cause I did have people ask me about the most recent childcare, and I had no information.
Yeah, we can do that. So, uh, you know, the TADGIL survey, as well as the, um, the childcare survey, um, those are, those are in response to the resident initiative to bring a Boys and Girls Club or YMCA to Belcher Town. So we put some information out there just to get some more feedback from the public.
They asked for a specific one.
So we did a townwide survey for one resident?
No.
No, no, not for the resident, for the Boys and Girls Club.
The Boys and Girls Club asked for the survey?
They asked for some more data points, and they provided us with questions.
Okay, so I didn't know that either. I had people asking.
You were there at that meeting.
You know, I didn't, that they would do that. I asked that question, it was like, who put this together? It's really well done.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there was, yeah, Boys and Girls Club, Kate, um...
Oh, okay.
Worked on it, um, I think Lisa Stahl was involved in it, so we put that together. But they were at the public meeting.
Okay, yeah, that'd be, make us look more knowledgeable.
So we did, eh, as part of the health, uh, the human services department study that the county center did, we, we asked some questions about those types of programs. The Boys and Girls Club were supplied those results, the raw data, and then asked for some additional questions to be answered, so.
And are we doing the same thing with the Y?
The way that it's worded in the survey, it's open-ended, it's not specific to the Boys and Girls. It's a YMCA or the Boys and Girls Club type programming.
Right, but that survey is only going out to one audience.
It's already gone out, and it's closed, or...
It's gone out to the general public, and it went to all the students in...
That's what I mean, but there's no, there, like, I couldn't fill it out, because I don't...
There was a separate one for adults.
I don't have kids, so I'm...
That's why there was a separate one for, there was two surveys.
Okay.
One that went to the general public, and one that went to just the students.
That's right.
Now, the Boys and Girls Club specifically asked for a student... Now, the Boys and Girls Club specifically asked for a student survey.
That makes sense.
Yep, yep. So yes, so you couldn't answer that one because it wasn't directed towards you, but there was a parallel one that did go out.
What did it do? Go to their school email?
I believe so. It was sent to Brian Cameron.
Yeah. I mean, I, I want everybody to have access, so.
Yeah.
And there's more than just Belcher Town's public school students in this town.
That's exactly right.
But if they're here for school choice, then it's likely they, they would potentially use after-school programs. Alright, moving on. So anyhow, yeah, the engineers and consultants are working on TADJO. I attended a capital improvement planning committee meeting. They are working on their FY twenty-seven capital plan. I attended the finance committee meeting. They approved all of the articles going to town meeting, special town meeting for the health insurance. I've been working with town council on the Pathfinder lease. Been reviewing the warrant and the motions for the special town meeting. We did receive a Mass Trails Grant for the Tressel Bridge of eighty-six thousand ten dollars. I worked through that paperwork last week. The Tressel Bridge is along the, it crosses the Javish Brook on the trail south of the underpass on North Washington Street. If you're to walk the old rail bed, you'll, you'll find it down there.
Also received ninety-three thousand dollars.
Yes.
For the hiking trail around Lake Wallace. We got two trailers.
That's so exciting.
Yes. So I didn't have to do any paperwork on the ninety-three thousand dollar one yet. That's why I didn't put it in my report.
I just wanted to make sure everyone knows.
I never know when we're allowed to comment on grants.
So the Belcher Town Greenway.
The eighty-six thousand was the Conservation Commission in partnership with the Friends of the Belcher Town Greenway.
Okay. And the ninety-six thousand?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three was Doug Albertson and the.
Lake Wallace.
That's great. That's fantastic.
They're doing such good work.
Yeah.
A very, very small thing, but only because it was brought to my attention twice, is the bridge behind Stop and Shop. Did those nails get, yeah.
I believe so, yeah. Linda said she took care of them.
Oh, thank goodness, because she came back and said they weren't fixed. And I was like, really?
Nail nails.
They pop out the wood after it dries seventy years, so like it's just, so they were sticking up and like if you walk across them, you catch your foot or your shoe.
And that's what happened to her. And, you know, she, she lurched forward and that wrenched her back, and so.
I can double-check with her tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
Where was I? Health insurance, that's almost daily with the HR director. The EV charging stations that are going next to the affinity house, between the affinity house and the library. They're in. They're not operational yet. The line painting is gonna be done this week, I believe, weather permitting. I don't have an ETA and when the charging stations will be operational, but they're, they're there, so we're heading in the right direction. And that's all I have.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Really impressive, Steve.
Yeah.
Okay, review of weekly mail?
I have one thing um that I wanted to talk about and that's on November first, which hopefully John can talk more about it at four PM at the Mini Fenway. John?
Yeah, so I'm on the little mini, or the little leak board of directors, uh, the vice president, just to disclose all that. But we applied for a grant with the state. Uh, part of that warrant article is about Mini Fenway. The state has given us twenty-five thousand dollar grant to help redo the wall.
That's fantastic.
Two thousand and eleven. I mean, it's showed its years and decay. It's a big staple in Belcher Town. People from all across New England come in to this place in Belcher Town to play baseball. If you talk about baseball out in Boston area, they all talk about this Mini Fenway location in the Quavins. So we have two things that stick out to people in Boston, Fenway Park and the Quavins, so.
Will, will the twenty-five thousand be enough?
It won't be enough, so they'll be getting additional money from different sources across to finish it, but it's a kickoff program, so.
We'll fight for it.
I did. I applied to it and uh, we do things, back in, before I was a select board member, I applied for this, so. But it does things like Memorial Day fundraising, so we do a whole Memorial Day ceremony that we usually invite all the select board members and state officials to. Our veterans in the community. Kids come over and sing from so forever. We have kids play taps. We have little kids sing the National Anthem. There's probably, I wanna say five hundred residents out there at one point. And so it's a, the field's used from October, from one April all the way to November first, depending on weather, but it's used every single day. So it's, it's huge for the community. It's good for everything, because it's gonna be, help us get ADA bathrooms. So it'll help Jessica Bounthers pay around, so those kids from wheelchair can come up and access bathrooms that are ADA certified, as long as a nice sidewalk, so we can get those kids on the field again and playing in Belcher Town like the Miracle League and stuff like that. So we're bringing all that future revenue into Belcher Town.
That's great, John. That's really great.
Good for the community. It's good for everybody and it's, it's community-wide, so. What's that?
Trying to figure out what B L L stands for.
Belcher Town Little League.
No, that's, that's huge.
So that's a ceremony on November first.
Yeah, so we're gonna honor the kids aging off the field, so there'll be like a pre-ceremony for like, moms will get flowers and dads will get flowers. They'll come out of center field, then we'll do the grant application to take picture and stuff. The news should.
Sending out invitations?
Yeah, uh, I think the secretary sent out an invitation to in our.
It's in the mail.
In our mail.
That's why we're talking about.
No, I, I saw that. I just know that we were.
And I sent it to as a.
She wants a formal invitation.
Chief, yeah. Well, that was a formal one. I stayed away from it because it was a conflict of interest.
Okay, yeah.
That's why the secretary stepped in and sent a lot of stuff out. But everyone's invited. Uh, come November first, there'll be a wiffle ball game afterwards, so even if you don't.
Wiffle ball.
It's a New England thing. So your kids, even if you don't play there, you can play and go get a little pizza and order, so.
What time is this start?
Starts at four o'clock, so give us ten minutes of rough.
You're so.
Big start time, but they're planning a movie afterwards, so it'll be a good for the community.
So fun. Like on the field movie? That's so cute.
Um, fantastic.
All's invited, invite everybody. Whole community can come.
Okay, great. Uh, well, do you wanna kick off your board report too?
Uh, nine October, I went to the Chamber of Amers at Arc Point, where Jen can talk more. This is more her thing, but I showed up. New businesses joined from Belcher Town at a discount rate, but this is Jen's thunder, so I'll let her take it. It was a good day. It was fun. Uh, ten October, went to Quavin Days. Uh, that was in person at the DCR. Lisa Nicole went. A lot of state representatives were there. It was the first time ever. Ed did a great job putting this on. I think this will grow into something big for the town and for the Quavin District as well as the state. I feel we're just touching the tip and not even like expanding the revenue ideas that could come from this for the town in general. So, if you can add more, do it later. Uh, fourteen October, I went to the school committee online. They talked about the five-year strategic plan they, they rolled out. They talked about dibbles and stuff like that. One part of the five-year strategic plan they have going on. So they're working out, they're reaching out to the community on that stuff to change some of the, their planning, but they're in the process of it. It's a lot of data in that plan. I think it's like a hundred and something pages. So we should probably get a copy of it. Brian could probably give us some insight of that. That might be something good.
Yeah.
Just give a quick overview of it.
For the five-year or for dibbles specifically?
Five years, just give us a quick. I think there's like a hundred and fifty pages or something. It's a lot.
It's a lot, yeah.
I went to, fifteen October, I went to the first part of the zoning appeals. I've never been. I just wanna say that was meetings, the Jen, the chair, runs a great meeting. It is very intense sitting in that meeting, because it's like, you sit in front of the meeting and you fight these zoning board appeals. I just wanna give the residents credit for doing this, but give the committee members, the committee members, the other part of it, because you're yelling and they're into screening matches. And you can hear in the hallway, it's, it's, it's nothing bad. I mean, everyone's fighting for it. They believe in, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot of work. I don't think they get the credit for this, I wanna say horrible job, because you're the one telling them no or yes, so it's a very difficult situation they're under. Fifteen October, I just come over to the finance committee and I was here with Steve for a while and did the, they voted on the board articles. Sixteen October, we were supposed to do the Veterans Advisory Committee. Um, it was canceled due to a family emergency. I don't wanna get into that right now. She hasn't released anything yet. Nothing bad against her. I just want to leave it at a family emergency. But she is planning the Veterans Day ceremony. Invitations will be out for all of us. It's eleven October, or eleven November at eleven AM at the VHS auditorium.
Eleven eleven at eleven.
VHS auditorium.
Okay.
We're all invited. Um, she just hasn't gotten them out yet. She has some family stuff going on, so we just have to, just wanna get that word out, save the date for everybody.
I've gone every year. It's an outstanding job.
She's actually planning a Veterans Day lunch too on sixth November at the Senior Center. We're all invited to that too.
Wow.
Is she sending out an invitation for that?
She might be, but I just wanna get the dates out. In case it doesn't come out, I just want you guys to get them all. Save the dates.
I'm sorry, just in case, can you repeat them again?
So eleven November, eleven AM at VHS. That's when they stopped World War I, so that's the whole significance of Veterans Day.
Thank you for that.
Eleven at eleven.
So Veterans Day ceremony, okay.
Uh, Veterans Luncheon at six November at the Senior Center.
Six November, oh, November six.
November six, sorry.
Veterans Luncheon at the Senior Center, okay.
That's normal luncheon hours. You don't have to eat, but if you're all gonna eat.
Wait, what time is?
New, normal lunch hours at the Senior.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Veterans Day ceremony, eleven eleven at eleven.
Yeah.
Which is fun.
Luncheon, eleven six at the Senior Center. What time?
Noon.
Okay, thank you.
They're not doing anything special, like no prime rib this time, but every two years, Pat Hunter comes and does it. This year, I think the Lions Club is donating some food. The sponsor for things, so they're still working on details on that meal. Since I didn't go, but I just wanna let everyone know, there is a square dancing at the Old American Legion at the same time on a Wednesday night, so if you ever wanna go to square dancing.
Square dancing is super fun.
It looked like fun, but I have two left feet. They invited me because I walked through there, but I just wanna get it out there and give them a little.
The American Legion?
Yeah.
That's fun.
It's kinda cool. So if you're into that, I'd like the community to know. It's open to everybody. It's not just seniors or anything, so it's open to everybody.
We went as a family.
Nice.
It's the silliest thing.
I've been square dancing.
Well, we did. It's fun.
Since that was canceled, I was able to go to the rec committee. It was next door, uh, so I went that in person. They're working on a CPC grant for new benches and bleachers. Soccer field, Lake Wallace Fest, they talked about, the, the grant money they talked about. So the biggest thing I got of that too was the, the school program survey came in. It's a lot of data, so they're looking at doing new programs and trying to figure out what the town residents want for the programming, if they're school. Some of this will help, actually. We talked about like how they're condensing schools, so this might be able to get age groups certain schools and get better programming. Because they're talking about busing kids to like different areas, like, but now that we're condensing, we might be able to capture those age groups at the right school at the right time. So they're looking into all that stuff. So that's really good. Uh, voters lounge is open. Sign up for the little voters lounge if you haven't. The high school girls soccer team is help volunteering to run the lounge with Kyle, so get out there. The other big thing out of that is the pool grate repair. They're looking at that as one of our know, that needs to be repaired at some point. It's not an easy job, so they're looking at other repairs. They have to drain the whole pool. And it's a lot of money to fill that back up.
I remember when we discussed that last year. It's a lot of money.
So.
They're gonna stop to Capone, right?
They're talking to Capone and stuff like that, but that's, I mean, it's all funding that might come to in the budget season.
It's like a hundred thousand gallons or something, our pool?
It's like twenty thousand dollars, I wanna say roughly, maybe more, to fill that pool.
Yeah, it's around a hundred thousand gallons.
So, I mean, I gave them some ideas. Maybe we can work on a fire drill that day. Not a fire drill, but like a fire rescue type thing. Work with the local fire departments and shuttle water around and kinda help with some of that stuff, so maybe it's stuff we can look into and kinda save the cost a little bit, but that's a huge cost to come with the pool. Never mind other repairs when they drain the pool, they have to, they should do it at this point. So it might be, we might put something off, but we should look at. We might need another couple grand to fix certain things while the pool's drained. It's the time to do it.
There's a time of year, they, they drain the pool every year anyway, though. Could it all not be done at the same time?
No, they all drain it every year.
They don't?
I don't think so. They clean the filters every year. They might partly drain.
Because when I, when I go there, there's always a time of year where the pool is freezing cold because they've just refilled it and it hasn't come to full temperature again.
Yeah, I think that's only a partial draining, not a full.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a full draining completely. So like regrowding might need to look at when they drain the pool. There might be like hitting costs that we don't know what this is happening, that we need to plan for and do it while the pool's drained, if that makes sense. Stuff to think about in the future. That's all I have.
That's it?
I wanna thank him personally for going to the rec committee.
I was trying to go to the family center, but the rec went over and I couldn't get to the, I couldn't get over to the family center that day at the same time. We went overtime.
There were so many meetings that night.
Yeah, there was a lot.
What name?
Oh, I hate going after John.
Make him go last next time.
Make John go last.
Alright, alright.
These are not in consecutive order. They're just, they came to my mind, so, um, but I was also being thoughtful about what's, what's relevant and interesting. So I wanted to share that I joined the Energy and Sustainability Committee meeting on the sixteenth and, um, they were, they were doing well. I thought that the meeting went well. They have some new members. So they have, I believe they have full membership at this point. They may still have one spot, but they had no trouble with quorum. Um, and they reviewed with me again some of the things that they've done over the last year, which I think we're very familiar with, you know, such as the Belcher Town, um, energy plan and then also the, the charging stations, which as Steve had in his report are almost done. But, um, talking about new goals, they're looking toward the Fasson O'Neill report in the master plan and trying to think about what their next steps will be. And they are planning on coming forward. I think they've already requested an appointment for this year.
Uh, not officially.
Not officially, okay.
I have worded that they will be.
Yeah, so they're gonna come to us with a few goal ideas and then maybe seek some guidance, but they, they seem to be doing well. Um, and then in no, no order, um, I wanted to share that I did not also go to that family center meeting, because it was at the same time as the ES committee meeting. But, um, I did wanna share that I am in regular conversation with the family center right now. I know they're having some emails sent to us and I think they're also gonna be requesting an appointment to come and speak to us about their future planning. I think they're making some headway in some of their, their goal setting, but we're in regular conversation. They're gonna have a proposal for us, yes. So, um, we are regularly in conversation right now.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, and then CPC, I attended their meeting on the seventh. It was very short, not too much to share other than they are working on implementation of some of the fiscal twenty-five, um, grants that were approved at town meeting and working through some things there. And then the Belcher Town Cultural Council, I also attended their meeting on the seventh as well. And, um, I stayed only for the first few minutes because my kids came and interrupted me and I needed to go because it was virtual, but um, as you might have seen, they had an artist install a bench on the, the Lake Wallace Trail and it was presented at Lake Wallace Day and there were some concerns about ADA compliance. They were immediately on it. Um, I was helping them get in touch. Originally, I went to Linda Leduke. She sent us over to Paul Asma and Paul Asma had some good advice. So it looks like they'll be able to either convert that bench or future benches, because not all benches need to be ADA compliant. So they're doing good work there. And they're already talking about winter light nights, which is exciting. And I wasn't gonna mention this, but John encouraged me to, but on the fifteenth of October, um, my boys are, and the Boy Scouts are in Cub Scouts, and I don't try to talk about them much, but there was a really cool event. They had, um, emergency responder night they do every year. And our emergency responder team firefighters come out. They bring the big ladder. The ambulance is there. The K-nine unit comes. It's a big deal. And they, they give up their time freely and they come and they show all these little kids how important this stuff is. They made first aid kits. It was really good, great. And John came downhill, because you thought there was an emergency happening, right?
It was a lot of, I mean, it's good, it's good for the community. I think it's important that the community recognizes that the scouts are out there doing this stuff. That's why we, Northampton Police were there, environmental police were there. Oh, I don't know who else. There was a lot of different police associations involved, Belcher Town, but it was good for the community to see that present.
So did, is it, do they teach them about that?
They do. They, they talk about everything they do. They talk about, you know, when they use their services. They made first aid kits together. And it's, it's just a nice thing they do for, and I just, I'm very thankful.
That's great.
A lot of them volunteered their time, like the police officers from Northampton. It wasn't like paid, so it's like a lot of volunteer work, so it's good for the community.
I'm glad you encouraged her.
Yeah. She's like, you gotta talk about this. And I was like, well, it's just for my kids. And you're like, no, it's not. I was like, okay, so things done. And other than that, I went to the library book sale, of course. So hopefully y'all, y'all went to.
Yes.
Jen?
Oh, it's my turn. Yes, the chancellor came to town. So this was, I'm just gonna reiterate the history of the chancellor coming to town, which was a bunch of relationship building that we've been doing with the chamber. So we did have an event with the chamber. This was all part of. So, we did have an event with the chamber. This was all part of, um, work being done under the economic, creative economy stuff. Um, so. The branding Belcher Town, no, sorry. What is, what is the cohort that we have with the chamber? That was at our point was ten businesses that we subsidized using our.
Oh, building up Belcher Town.
Building, yeah, I forgot the name of, I don't know why.
Building up Belcher Town.
Building up Belcher Town. Yeah, um, that was one of the LRRP recommendations, so that was finally executed at the tail end of Maude's, um, final, time with us. Um, Maude is no longer, uh, on contract, unfortunately, fourteen, the date of the chancellor visit was her last day. So, I'm very sad that she is no longer, um, assisting us with any of this activity that we've been doing. Um, but, uh, so I bring all of this to gather to point out is that we have been doing a lot of relationship building with the chamber itself, the Amherst Chamber in specific.
Yeah.
Um, we also have a relationship with the Quavo Chamber, um, but that is not as well defined at this very moment. They have a new ED and they're still getting their feet underneath them. Um, to that end, on Friday, if anyone wants to go, there is a legislative breakfast, uh, at.
This Friday?
This, no, not this Friday.
Is there one on Halloween?
Halloween. There's a legislative breakfast, and we are a member of the chamber, so if you wanna go, I'm not gonna go, so one of you guys. Gonna should go to legislative breakfast that's happening, where it's what what's happening.
I know Lisa and I went last year and Steve went last year. It's great.
Didn't I go last year too? That's when, yeah, that's when Aaron spoke and.
Yeah, it's legislative breakfast, so they usually have representatives come and they speak about stuff. We were highlighted a couple years back.
Yeah.
Um, and I've spoken at at the, um, meeting. Um, but these are the types of relationship building, uh, activities that we can and should all be doing, and that is what led to the chancellor coming to town. Um, through the efforts of working with the chamber and then, uh, their introduction to the UMass folks and telling us we should talk to them. And we started building relationships with them.
I'm happy to go as long as somebody else goes with me.
You guys can register and go.
I'm booked.
John?
I have to look at my schedule for Halloween with my kids.
I mean, it's in the morning, it's in the morning. Eight thirty in the morning. It's not like it's in the evening time. It's a breakfast, so.
Steve?
I'm gonna try.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna, I'll see if I can move a meeting. It's a great breakfast.
Go for the bacon.
Yes, for the bacon is very good.
Very good. I I went a couple years ago with you. I don't think I went last year.
You did go last year. Is that right next to you? We have a picture.
That's right. We have a picture, the three of us, with me and Steve. That's right.
So, these, these chamber relationships are a way of spreading information about Belcher Town, and that's why I personally feel like it's important. For representatives, um, from our board and from other, uh, entities and committees to be attending them. Also, to that end, November eighteenth, can we talk about that?
Yes.
Uh, Whitney, uh, already, I mean, we're all invited, and I'm trying to get a table together. Um, there's a whole bunch of folks that used to work with, um, this beautiful volunteer individual. Are we last, they haven't even announced it.
I know. I don't know. It happened.
Well, so we, so we have a local resident who volunteers a lot of time to Belcher Town, who's gonna be receiving an award.
Right.
So, I, today I RSVP'd for, um, Lisa, Jen, Whitney, and myself.
Oh, great.
I have like six people.
I have to look at my schedule.
Lisa Stahl are great.
Who is that one?
I have like other people.
Our cultural district manager.
It's like a waitlist.
Well, I asked Jake if we could, um, have like.
November eighteenth.
Table of of folks, and so he hasn't written back to me, but, um, there's a bunch of folks who served with her on various committees.
Yeah.
Would like to, um, honor her as well.
We bring foghorns.
Yeah, so that's November eighteen, so it's the Amherst Chamber A plus awards dinner at UMass Amherst.
From five to seven, right?
Five to whenever time it's over, yeah. Um, so I would just highly recommend if anyone wants to go.
I'm gonna be able to go to that.
Yeah.
To go, um.
You sent out an email about that too.
So, I heard back from three of you.
Yeah, yeah, so if other folks wanna go, please, um, comment on her. Um, and then, uh, Lisa and I attended the Western Mass Economic Developers Conference at MGM. Um, there were two members, um, from the EDIC in attendance there as well. Um, and so that was good to see some of those folks at the developers conference. There was a lot of good networking that happened there. Um, so again, it's this concept of relationship building, and you never know like where it goes. Um, so, I, I strongly believe in that type of a mentality of like, you know, going and meeting and talking and. And you never know where these things go. They could go nowhere, they could go somewhere. So, like, you know, we talked to West Mass, we talked to Granby Built, what, Western Builders in Granby. We had a great conversation with two ladies there.
Yeah.
You know, uh, Common Capital was there, Mass Development was there, again, West Mass was there.
Yeah.
And we saw a great presentation, um, by the Ruiz Family Foundation about the investment that they're making in Holyoke, which is incredible. Which could have a trickle-down effect across the entire region. So, you know, these are the types of things that I think. Um, in terms of economic development, that, you know, personally, I am interested in it and especially I go to these things. But I think, you know, the more, uh, folks from Belcher Town, from various boards and committees that go to these types of events, you know, and spread the awareness of like what we have going on. In Belcher Town is really important at this crucial point in our community's future.
Okay, that's all I have.
Those are the fun things that the board should be taking advantage of.
Yeah, right, right.
You know, why just sit here all night and not, not have fun?
I mean, we're a little fun.
So, um, uh, I'm just gonna bring up a couple things. This, everybody's kind of talked about it. I did go to a, um, a couple of meetings on the seventh, um, to talk about, uh, the town, a town meeting enhanced packet. And a basic overall recap of, um, the town meeting for last year. Um, just to, just to make sure we're, we're thinking of everything this year. It was a very good group of, uh, of folks. And, um, so it was definitely worth the time. Um, I went to Quavon Days, um, with John and Nicole. That really was wonderful. Ed was great. Um, and it was a picture-perfect day.
I should mention it was Ed Como.
Oh, yeah.
Think that we're talking about.
Oh, yeah, Ed Como, sorry.
He keeps saying Ed, and I'm like, okay.
Sorry.
Ed Como, Ed Como. Um, okay, uh, on the fourteenth, uh, with, with Jen, um, I attended the UMass meeting. And, um, one of the things that, this was an intro meeting. This was not us, uh, you know, developing a proposal for them to think about. This was literally, you know, this is Belcher Town. Steve, uh, you know, talked about the demographics. And Doug did much more about what, uh, what land is available. Um, Mass Development was there to talk about Carriage Grove, um, uh, and Jen talked about it as well. Um, the, uh, Jake and Aaron were there, and while they didn't have scripted, um, parts. Uh, were, were very enthusiastic and, and, and offered appropriate, uh, data. To support what everyone was saying. So, and, and I'm, that's not everybody, so I know I'm missing people. But the important thing that came out of it was there was so much work put into this. Hours and hours and hours to prepare for this meeting. And, um, the Director of External Affairs, uh, said about the meeting. That they had already visited three other communities. And, uh, that our, um, our presentation was by far the best.
Oh, that's great.
Um, and the chancellor, we also very much wanna hear from, said that he concurred. And, uh, it's because Belcher Town had a plan. And so, that puts us in, in good stead. Uh, and so, UMass will be the ones that will dictate what next steps are. Um, it, uh, the, the feeling I came away with, Jen, I don't know if you did. Was that UMass sees themselves as a convener. That we, that they would be bringing other communities that they've talked to, um, together with ours. So that we become more cognizant of what, uh, you know, what, what the region. Uh, pro, you know, problems and opportunities, the SWAT of other towns. And, uh, before, you know, any kind of anything is mentioned. Um, and just my personal thought is that they would like to see the biggest value. From all the communities, you know, so, because if you choose one community, that's three other communities, for instance, that are not gonna be had. So, but again, they, they, that's just my conjecture. They could, they could come in with something, uh, different. But for right now, it was very good. It was a very positive response, and everyone, um, did a great job. Steve did a wonderful job in leading the intro and, uh, and moving the, um, the meeting along. It was, um, and Doug did, everybody did, so I think we represented well. Um, for a very first initial meeting, and then they went out and toured, um, the available space we have, so.
That was the cultural.
Yeah, the cultural district.
And also, just, can we just give props to Lisa Stahl?
Lisa Stahl, of course. See, this is what I mean. I shouldn't have started. Lisa Stahl was amazing. I mean, she, she pulled it all together. Maude also, I mean, I mean, it was, it was definitely, um, a team effort. Okay, I do okay.
Yes, of course.
All right, and then, uh, I, uh, I also went to the Western Mass, uh, Developers Conference. It was excellent. Um, and yes, the EDIC members were there. UMass was there too. Um, and Mass Development, and, um, so, we spent the day after the conference. With the very same people, which was like, we didn't know, so it was very, uh, fortuitous. Um, and, um, one of the presentations, you're gonna have to help me with this. Um, it's a, it is a, is it a battery? This is a technology. I, I know, I did, and it's a technology that will help food service, um, to check. Do you remember this?
Oh, it's food sciences.
It was food, yeah, but it was a very specific thing that's being built in, um, Holyoke.
Yeah.
And.
Oh, no, that's the AI thing. There's a whole bunch of cool stuff happening out of.
But UMass is doing it, so I attended it anyway, just to get in on the ground floor of it. And to ask for obviously what I need, um, which is kind of a tutorial of, okay, I listened, I got it, it's cool. But can you slow the roll and explain what this really is? So, I'm waiting to hear back from them, so.
Cool.
That's all I have. Yeah, Nicole, you did.
Did you go?
Go write board report.
Do your board.
Oh, no.
I apologize.
That's okay. Honestly, it's Medicare open enrollment, so I, um, I've not been doing as much as I could be. But I'll just share the few things I did. Um, I did attend the, the meeting on, uh, October ninth for the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust. Um, I think we covered everything with Steve. Um, I actually sat with a member of the, um, AG Commission. And, uh, she's also a member of the Lamson Brook Farm Board. Her name is Tammy Ryan. Um, she gave me a soup-to-nuts historical overview of Lamson Brook Farm, from history to what's going on today. With, um, legislation or what's not going on with legislation, um, the role that the NIPMUC may or may not play in that, everything. Um, and the reason that I wanted, first of all, I just wanted to understand what was going on, just out of interest in it. I used to live right up the street from there, and I never really knew all that was happening down there, but also I kind of wanna take advantage of our legislative visit. That's coming up and be able to ask, um, Jake and Aaron, you know, what's the holdup? What's the problem? Um, you know, I know there's some different state agencies that are involved, but it's just not moving forward. Development down there is just not moving forward, so. Um, I attended Quavon Days. Um, one thing we did learn is that Jake's grandfather. Was on the crew that, um, chopped down the trees.
Oh, my gosh.
To flood the Quavon.
Wow, his grandfather?
His grandfather was part of that, yep. Um, and then I attended the, uh, the branding committee meeting that same day, and I believe Terry is going out for at least one more quote. For our seal. Um, but something, is Terry still on?
She's still on.
So, Terry, I'm not sure if you can hear, but from what I understand, the five thousand dollar quote that we got. Is for a color seal, and I thought we were going with black and white, so I was wondering if we could get some clarification on that.
Oh, and poor Terry, by the way, it's been three hours.
I don't know.
Yeah, so if we're only going for black and white, does that mean that our five thousand dollar quote should actually be considerably less?
It should be.
That's what she's looking into now. She's getting more quotes and looking into that.
But even the quote that we got may be sufficient, okay? And that's it, that's all I have.
Well, that's great, thank you. Um, okay. Uh, are there any, uh, questions in the press? Is anybody here? No. Okay, with that, do I have a, hear a motion to adjourn?
Do we have to do item ten? Future items for discussion?
So, before you read the executive session.
Oh, yeah.
I don't have an update on quote spring school. Um, I have a meeting set up tomorrow to talk to the attorneys, so I'll have an update for the next meeting. So, all we have to do in executive session tonight would be approve minutes, and I would rather go home, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want me to make an executive decision?
Thank you. Matt, here, a motion to adjourn.
We gotta sign stuff.
Do we have to do that?
Can I just ask a question about number ten, since it is on our agenda? This is our parking lot. How are we gonna start getting these items onto our agendas?
We're actually doing that. That's why Gold Kane was on.
Awesome.
Um, and, uh, generally, we look at, okay, depending on how busy the meeting is and how much we need to accomplish. How much time are we gonna need, and also what the most pressing item is, and Steve generally has a good idea of that.
Okay.
What needs to be. Do you have one that you would like?
Uh, no, I, I was, I was curious. I know that we're also gonna get some more requests for more appointments coming up. And then I also, just while I'm talking, um, I wanted to ask, I really appreciate these time recommendations under appointments, but we're not adhering to them. Um, should I become the time keeper?
Please.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?